This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, folks. We did call our meeting to order for this Harwich Board of Selectmen's meeting for April 27, 2021 at 6:00 PM, in which we went into executive session to discuss the litigation strategy with respect to the case 3137 L L C at all, Ember and Port versus Talapharwich at all, United States District Court, CA, number 121 CP 10-473, if discussing matter in open session will have detrimental effect on the town's litigation position, and the chair still declares. We left executive session at 6:47, and now we're back to open session. I would like to start with the pledge of allegiance, if you will repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for the republic which stands under God, invisible, liberty, and justice. I would like to, before we go into weekly briefing, recognize Link Thatcher, who passed away a few days ago. I did not know him well personally, and we had several discussions with him. What I do think about him, now turn it over to Don, is that I think for many others, I know me particularly, he represented what we like to think we are in Harwich, as a cranberry grower, which of course set the stage, and we're still facing these times, we're trying to find ways to protect our cranberry farms. But then branched out, as so many have, to help the town out in numerous voluntary activities. And we want to recognize not only his influence in town, but all his good works. And Don, I'll ask you to comment, if you will, as well.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I did know Link for darn near 30 years. He was an outsized, gregarious guy, to say the least. I know for a fact in his obituary, he didn't pay this justice. Basically, he and a number of others were always eating breakfast at Ike's downtown Harwich Port. In my view, they were the real government of Harwich for many years. He was an auctioneer, which is really where I ran across from my church. He would sell anything and everything, and you would thank him for taking your money from you. Of course, he was the tree warden for many years. Outside of his wife Bev and his family, he loved nothing more than cranberry farming. I personally will always remember going past the Great Western Boggs with the Christmas tree on in the Christmas season. It wasn't Christmas until Link had the Christmas tree up. So I guess, I mean, my final comment on it would be, as long as there are bogs and trees swaying in the wind, we can all rest assured that Link is still with us.
Thank you, Don. I'll next move then to weekly briefing. Joe, I'll start with you, and I assume you'll pass the buck, but go with it.
I gladly will, Mr. Chairman, to our head public health director, on a day with quite a bit of updating, breaking news, but I'll turn it over to Dr. Katie O'Neil.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry I missed you last week. I'm sure Megan told you that the Board of Health meeting was at the exact same time as the Board of Selectmen meeting. Many major updates have been made since the report was published Friday, as Joe mentioned. I know you have a huge agenda to get through tonight, so I'll try to keep this as brief as possible. One of the first major updates is that the pause on the Johnson and Johnson vaccine has been lifted. The CDC and the FDA both suggest that the administration of the vaccine resume, which is great news. They are aware that that could cause a very serious potential problem in very few individuals. So they believe that the potential risk, excuse me, the potential benefits outweigh the potential risk. But they do believe that women in their young 50s, when younger than 50 years old, should at least be aware of the rare but increased risk, and that there are other COVID vaccine options available that do not have these increased risks. But the CDC and the FDA will certainly both continue to monitor the safety of all the vaccines. In other news, which Joe was referring to, Hunter Baker made some fairly extensive updates today. Effective Monday, May 10, large venues will be permitted to increase occupancy to 25%. Some other industries will also be allowed, including amusement parks, theme parks, and outdoor water parks will all be permitted to operate at a 50% capacity after submitting safety plans to the Department of Public Health. Road races and other large outdoor athletic events will be permitted, again, after submitting safety plans to the Health Department or the Department of Public Health. Youth and amateur sports tournaments will be allowed, as well as singing will be indoors with very strict distancing requirements. And then we did announce that pending on what the public health and vaccination data show on May 29, the gathering limits would increase to 200 people indoors and 250 people outdoors. And this includes event venues, public settings, as well as private settings. This change would also include street festivals and parades would be allowed to operate at 50% of previous capacity. These would need to have plans submitted for review prior to operating. Ours, beer gardens, breweries, wineries, and distilleries would also be allowed to operate under the restaurant rules with seated service, 90-minute time limit, and no dance floors. The restaurant guidance will be updated to eliminate the requirement that food be served with alcohol, and they will increase the maximum table size to 10. Again, subject to public health and vaccination data, then on August 1, the remaining industries would be permitted, depending on the data, would be permitted to open, include dance clubs, nightclubs, saunas, hot tubs, indoor water parks, and ball pits. At this point in time, all industry restrictions would be lifted, and capacity would increase to 100% for all industries. Businesses would be encouraged to follow, keep following best practices, and at that point, gathering limits would be rescinded. The governor also made the announcement that effective April 30, the face coverings order will be relaxed for some outdoor settings. Face coverings will only be required outside and public when it's not possible to socially distance, and at other times required by the sector-specific guidance. Face coverings will still be required at all times indoors, though. They will be continued to be required at all events, whether indoors or outdoors. And then at smaller, private gatherings and homes, they're recommended but not required, and this date, $300 fine would be eliminated. But I would like to remind everyone, though, that the Harwich Board of Health passed a local regulation last summer that face masks are required on Main Street between Lower County Road and Bank Street, and that's from 9:00 AM until 10:00 PM, regardless of social distancing, if social distancing is being met. And this particular requirement can only be rescinded by the Harwich Board of Health. In terms of what the regulations will look like in the coming weeks, we still don't know. The state has not released any of the latest guidance, other than the updates that I just went through, and they likely won't release the guidance until the date actually goes into effect. That's kind of how they've handled these situations prior to now. I know everyone is anxious to have street fairs and festivals back, but we just, we can't start making plans until we know the specific requirements that we have to adhere to. In terms of numbers, we're only tracking 15 active cases, which is really great news. The state technically still has us in the red. I won't take up too much of your time going into the statistics of it, but my report discusses a little bit of what being in the red is with positivity rate, and why that might not be the best measure anymore. Tomorrow, we'll be hosting our first and so far only private vaccination clinic with Outer Cape Health and the Harwich Fire Department, and it's really been a great collaborative effort. I do want to give a special thanks to Jen in our office, who has planned, unplanned, and replanned the clinic with scheduling. There's been so much paperwork that goes into creating a clinic, and she just makes it so easy. We're really lucky to have our fire and EMS do all the vaccine administration. They've been so fantastic. The Health Department's really appreciative from all the help from both police, fire, DPW, and obviously the community center. So we're very appreciative to get this off of the ground finally tomorrow, after the planning, unplanning, and replanning. So we're excited for it to actually happen. So I know I just threw a lot at you all at once, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, that you did, Katie. I do, I do understand we may be reaching the point, if not now, soon, where we may actually have a surplus of vaccine, and the effort now is directed towards trying to be sure as many people get, take advantage of the vaccination as they can. Any thoughts on outreach of that, to how to get the word out?
That's actually.
My guess is some people are frustrated because it's so hard to schedule initially.
Absolutely. So we have a twice, twice a week Health Agents Coalition meeting with all the other health departments on Cape, and that, that's actually been our main concern right now. So that is something that we are working with, developing outreach programs, and the next step for that. Up until really very recently, we haven't had enough vaccines, so it's really been tough to get people vaccinated. But you're absolutely right, that is certainly our, our next effort that we'll be focusing on.
Thank you, Katie. Other comments or questions? Nice report. Hopefully, you're, you're enjoying being the health director now after a few weeks.
Yes, yeah, I have, I have a great leadership to look up to, so it's been a nice transition.
Good, thank you. Joe, if it's okay with you, I'll turn to Cindy.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. I know she's very excited, had a great announcement earlier.
That was a great announcement. I am always excited, Larry, yes. It's easy to be excited when you have such a great town to be promoting and such. But just a few updates in light of everything that Katie just went over. There are some key things that are still happening to help businesses. The SBA last week announced the Restaurant Revitalization Fund Grant, and I just want to let everyone know that the pre-registration starts this Friday at 9:00 AM, so restaurants can start to go into their accounts and compile all the required documents, because then Monday, May 3, the applications are accepted. So this is another way of getting some free money, so to speak. The grants are wonderful, and hopefully our restaurants will jump on those. Also, today kicked off the energy assessment and install for instant savings with Cape Light Compact in Harwich. They're in Harwich until the 29th, so that's going well, and excited for that. It's always great to see our businesses save where they can. And then just a welcome back for their second season to Sweet Izzy's Down by A&amp;W and the Trampolines. If you love ice cream but sometimes can't always enjoy it, this is dairy-free, gluten-free, and tastes delicious. So welcome back to Sweet Izzy's, and I am on the call for a couple of other things if needed. So that's it for now.
Thank you, Cindy. Any comments or questions for Cindy? If not, we'll move next then to public comment, and the presentation from Behavioral Health Innovators.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're joined this evening by David Spitz and Sheila House, and they're going to introduce Stephanie, whose last name I do not want to mispronounce, but David and Sheila. Thank you, Stephanie Briady. David and Sheila, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. For those of you that don't know who I am, I work for the town of Harwich as a therapist with teenagers, and I also collaborate with the Montemoy School System year-round, as well as a lot of other nonprofits. And we're here to talk to you tonight about an amazing nonprofit. Behavioral Health Innovators, for the past two years, has been piloting this program called Recovery Build APG. And an APG is an alternative peer group, and this is a whole different sort of one-of-a-kind program that's on Cape Cod, and it's a model that's been around for a while. We all know that teenagers at this age tend to not really listen much to what their parents are telling them, but rather what their peers are telling them. And this program is an after-school program for kids who are really starting to question what they're putting in their bodies, and how it's affecting them socially, and emotionally, and mentally, and physically. And so it's not like that stringent recovery treatment model where you go inpatient somewhere, and it's a very structured program. This is a peer-to-peer program, and there are amazing counselors. There's two therapists and one recovery coach that work with these kids after school, two days a week. And, and they, they really talk openly, they get the kids to talk openly about what got them using in the first place, and what is keeping them using. So it's pretty typical, kid that might be in this program, might be a kid who smokes pot every day, before school, after school, and they may have started out just, you know, experimenting recreationally once in a blue moon, but it's now become so woven into their life, and it's starting to affect their memory and their motivation, and also the fine motor skills that affects, so it's not great for athletes. And so we have one center that's running currently in Hyannis, but we're hoping to branch out into other towns. We'd really love to have one in Harwich eventually, and we're going and speaking to as many boards of selectmen as we can to get the word out. And, and the schools have been really good about, Montemoy especially, has been good about publicizing it. Lately, we've been speaking, Stephanie and I have been speaking to groups of kids at the high school, who are really, I mean, the trend is going up, where they're really concerned about their friends. They're concerned about blackouts while drinking, and, you know, dabbling in much more dangerous drugs. And also just how it's sort of has become, somebody, some kid told me that kids are out there smoking pot like it's their second job, you know, which is sort of sad. But anyway, we, we love it when schools refer kids because they don't want to get them in trouble legally, but they really want to help them. And they don't have to have their whole world falling apart to be in a program like this. That's what's so great about it, because it really stresses prevention and, you know, reflection. So we're, we're currently working with Montemoy and some of the other schools. I'm going to let Stephanie talk a little bit more about, about that, and we have a very short video we'd like to show you that gives you a flavor of the program. I know Danielle sent it to somebody, but I don't know how that stuff gets queued up, but we'll see what happens. So Stephanie.
Thank you, Sheila, and thank you all for giving us a few moments to talk about this program. I started the nonprofit in about, about 2016, and one of the core operating principles of our organizations is to, is to co-create solutions with young people in, with lived experience. And as Sheila said, we're hearing loud and clear from young people that they're very, very worried about their friends. And oftentimes, the middle schoolers will ask, how do I know if my friend's going to become addicted? So the program that Sheila's speaking to is one of the programs our nonprofit is involved in and created, and the aim is to get upstream of addiction. Sheila talked about teens working with each other, peer-to-peer, building awareness around their substance use. And, and we meet them where they are. It's not something that they have to, you know, adhere to strict rules, as Sheila mentioned. But I just want to settle, just very briefly, a context for us on Cape Cod. There are no, no adolescent treatment centers for young people with substance use disorder. And substance use disorder is, it's addiction, but it's a, you know, it's a dependence on substances, and families really have nowhere to turn on the Cape, other than to go off Cape. The closest treatment center for teenagers is in Worcester, which is a heck of a drive from the Cape. And then when they come back on Cape, just as you can imagine, in an adult situation, they come back to the same people, places, and things that really supported their, their use. And it was very, it's very difficult for this age group to find support. So we learned about this program. It's been around since the 70s down in Houston, Texas, and we've, you know, brought it up here to create it organically on Cape Cod. The other thing that you may not know about are there are five recovery high schools in Massachusetts, and these are specific high schools, they're very small, 50 and under, for students that, high school students that are already diagnosed with a substance use disorder, so already have an addiction. So in order to kind of give our families and our young people an access to support, we started this alternative peer group program. And the last thing I'll say before I, you know, bring David into the conversation is that we are working very closely with peer leaders and alternative learning program students in many of the high schools on Cape, and training them, giving them the tools. They've asked us, could you help us talk to our friends about their substance use? Because it's a very hard thing. You can imagine adult, adult, how hard it is. Well, teenagers are very uncomfortable calling, calling out their friends, or, you know, even communicating about it. So we're working closely with the schools, but we really wanted to, to let you all know about the program, that it's year-round, it is free, it's supported through grant funding that we've been fortunate enough to receive, and we have a lot of community support. The Cape Cod healthcare pediatricians are now screening teenagers during well visits for substance use disorder and referring to the program as well. So I'll turn it over to David, and then we'll show you that clip, that short clip about the program, and be here for questions. David Spitz.
Thank you, Stephanie. I won't take up much of your time. I'm simply a Cape Cod resident who's had family experience with addiction issues, and like so many others would welcome this sort of place for teens to go. So I'm very glad there's, I've been on the board since the end of last year, and I will continue to offer what I can to Stephanie and others' efforts. So back to you, Stephanie.
Thank you. I don't know who's teeing up the video, or if it's already teed up, but I'll defer to some.
So, Mr. Chairman, we have it set up with Jamie at Channel 18, and if that doesn't work, I have it queued up as well. So here we go.
... take over your mind, and you're not thinking properly.
Maybe this isn't normal, maybe I'm overdoing it.
You don't even realize you're going down that downslope until you're almost towards the bottom, and then you're scrambling, and you're like, what happened?
Turned into more of like, I need this, I need this drug, or else I'm gonna be sad all the time, and.
And so before I knew it, it progressed worse and worse and worse, to the point where a lot of them wouldn't even want to be around me if I were drinking.
Recovery Build opened in 2018 to create a safe space for teenagers with substance use challenges. At Recovery Build, peer mentors and counselors work with the teenagers to explore a path of recovery. On Cape Cod, there is no adolescent treatment for teenagers with substance use challenges. They have to go off Cape. There is also no after-school program for teenagers with substance use challenges. When they come out of treatment and come back to Cape Cod, they come back to the same people, places, and things that supported and fueled their addiction.
It was just, it was, I was just, because my friends were doing it, and that's what we did.
It very quickly became an everyday thing for me, because of the people I was hanging out with every day, we're already doing that.
We're the only teen space on Cape Cod that deals with teenagers with substance use challenges.
Recovery Build is a safe place for them to go and kind of talk about what, what's happening in their life, and other people can relate.
They listen to one another, they listen to stories about each other's substance use, and they feel like they found a safe, supportive, alternative peer group.
Or even the feelings that people are saying, feeling empty and numb, and you can relate to that and use substances to cope with that. You can kind of acknowledge that you have a problem, and so that's how I came into recovery, is I saw myself in other people.
Kids that they brought were also either smoking pot or getting in trouble, you know, sort of part of their social group. So then they could come and be social together, but in a safe place where they could do recovery.
One of the teenagers in the program shared that talking to our counselor, even though she looked old, she got him, and she understood.
Can't hear it now.
They were kind of funny. They were like, I don't mean like you're old or anything, but you're the first older person that I could talk to that really understood what I was going through.
Right.
And that, I know, meant a lot, and held a lot of weight, and I think kept them coming back.
90% of adults who have an addiction today started using substances as teenagers. And for us, it's so critical to bring this population to resources as early on as. Possible to get ahead again of the disease of addiction. Recovery results from alternative peer groups that they have tracked since their existence. 85% of teenagers who are members of an alternative peer group will maintain their sobriety versus a 30% national average if they're not in an alternative peer group.
Well, we may not be able to show this tonight, Joe and Jamie.
Still no sound.
Mr. Chair, this is worthwhile enough, where I'd love to see and hear it from the beginning, and I believe the audience should too.
Jamie, can I suggest that we give you some time to work out the details? When you're ready, we'll come back to this.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll work with Channel 18. It's obviously not working for Jamie or I, and.
Our hope is to scale this program out across the Cape, so that there's an alternative peer group program in Provincetown, in Truro, in Wellfleet, in Sandwich, so that teenagers have access to this incredibly important resource.
It's just like changing, maybe like one little thing in one person, you know what I mean? And that can.
And I would love it to start at the beginning, Mr. Chair, because I got disappointed without the video.
Yeah.
Understood, Mr. Chairman. I've communicated that to Channel 18. What we can do in the meantime is we'll make efforts to also have it posted on the town's website.
Okay, we'll come back to that when we think we're ready.
Larry?
Yes.
And I suggest with John, with Don's suggestion about, or Joe's about pointing on the website, maybe we could get into comments from the board now, before we move off this subject.
That'd be fine.
I'll go for that. Go ahead, Michael.
I should say, I don't mean, I don't mean to step on you, Larry, but I should say that you can view the video on the website, recoverybuild.org, all one word, .org, as well.
Okay, thank you.
We'd love to hear questions.
Okay, Michael?
So my, my comment really is, I think this is wonderful, great work, and where would one, if they wanted to help, who would they talk to, and are you looking for any help?
You would call the, the phone number 774-487-5227, and you'd be talking directly with a counselor right from the program. And we're also, the schools are aware of the program. Superintendents have included in newsletters and in letters to the parents, so counselors at the school are aware of it. You can, you know, reach out to any of us on the board and talk with us, and it doesn't have to be, you know, your child, it could be somebody you're worried about, or a grandchild, or someone that you know that needs the support, and we'll get the, we'll get them access to the program. And I think Sheila mentioned this too, it's not, there's nothing punitive about it. It is, the question we ask, where we say is, you know, you're in trouble, how can we help? You know, and the trouble is, you know, all understandable, why they're using, what they're using to deal with, and it's just, we show them how it's really not going to serve them in the long run.
I think the program is wonderful. Thank you very much.
Others, Don, you were.
Others, Don, you wish to comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Especially for folks who've just moved onto the Cape recently. Sheila and I go way back. I wish I could say that this is, that it's only a mild problem or it hasn't existed here for very long. But just from my own experience years ago fostering, just finding a resource psychologically, psychiatrically, anything for adolescents is really difficult. I think it's terrific that embarking on this endeavor for anybody who thinks that, not here, not on Cape Cod, I think they're sadly mistaken. And we don't want a lost generation of kids. Really important that they don't have the stigma and that they do participate.
Thank you, Don. Ed?
Yeah, you know, I think anybody who's been aware of Sheila's activities and seeing how broadly she's been stretched with trying to take care of all the kids in our town that need assistance realize how much needed additional resources are, such as being, which is being proposed. She's done it truly Herculean. And I think a lot of us at times have been concerned that she's been overcommitted to the number of clients trying to manage. And so any, any additional resources that we can bring to our community, both here and across the Cape, would be greatly, a great benefit.
Is anyone listening in who wishes to comment? Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I can share at least the website. Okay, please. That might be helpful. This is the recoverybuild.org website.
It's a really great website. I, I really recommend everybody just go and play around on it because it has, not only has great videos of young people who have been through an alternative peer group program like this, talking about their journey and how they got on what they call the ramp to addiction. But also Pat Clancy, who's a local guy in recovery and an amazing yogi, he does a great video on the teenage brain and why it's so much more fragile than, you know, the adult brain, because we all know that their brains don't stop developing until they're 25. So there's just a lot of really great links all over the website. So take, take a stroll around.
Thank you, Sheila, and thank you. Certainly, I, we heard from, I think, all the selectmen, this is incredibly important subject. And I think we all read that it's unfortunately growing, especially this last COVID year. But even before that was a growing problem. So we very much appreciate your efforts.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move next to the agenda, this announcement. Mr. Chairman? Yes. Mr. Chair, I apologize for the interruption. I, I might want to suggest to the board that if you're so inclined, you have an item under new business, item A, and I believe we have family members present. So if the board would consider taking that item out of order for the benefit of the family, I think that would be well received. Okay.
I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you. Let me just, and can the Porter family identify themselves? They're waving at us now. I see you're celebrating when we're talking about the COVID. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll try and unmute them. Okay. Let me, while you're doing that, they contacted me several weeks ago suggesting and asking if we might recognize their parents who are coming up to a 70-year anniversary. And, and we surely should. I'm 20 years away from that yet, but it's a tremendous milestone. And so what I would like to do at this point, and I'd ask you to comment as well, is read approximation that put together from their information. And then I'm hoping we can build on, on the motion and we can provide that approximation. I'm only sorry that we, we can't do this in person, but.
Mr. Chair, if they can scroll down to the bottom of their screen, they might be able to unmute themselves.
The mute on my screen is the very bottom. You should have.
Move them out, it appears.
It might be on picture itself. There should be a picture of a microphone.
Yeah.
You got, no, not yet, a picture of a microphone you can click on? Joe, you're not, you're unable to unmute him from here, I assume. Correct. I see some of the microphones are engaged. You're open now. Your microphone is working now?
Yes, ours is working.
Okay. Do you wish to comment? Then I'll take a chance to read the approximation that we put together. So we heard from the user known as Dwight Porter and Kathy Randall.
That's correct. That's correct.
What I do, let me read the approximation. Amendment for Janet Maria and Stanley Dean Porter. And what it says is, whereas Janet Maria, they named Pile Porter and Stanley Dean Porter Jr. have been married 70 years this coming May 3rd, 2021, and have lived on the Cape since the 1970s. And whereas they have an extended family of five children, nine grandchildren, 10 great grandchildren. And whereas the couple has a long history of business and voluntary services to the Harwich region, Stanley Dean Potter Jr. as a master mason and contractor, member of the Bass River Rod and Gun, Gun Club, a tuna fisherman and member of the Harwich Pilgrim. I F A M, Janet Maria Pile Porter as a past member of Eastern Star, 20 years, with Tedeschi's. Chief at Rose's Restaurant and Dentists in the 70s, 80s. Whereas Janet is a homemaker who took care of us five children and all our friends. And that everyone is always welcome at their home. Therefore, the Harwich Porter Selectmen is pleased to issue this proclamation to honor Janet and Stanley Porter Jr. on their 70th wedding anniversary.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, that's, that's, I need to join that too. That's amazing feat. And to make this official, I entertain the motion to accept the proclamation. So all the selectmen sign it.
Larry, I move to accept the proclamation for Janet Marie and Stanley Dean Porter Jr.
Second. It's a roll call. Don?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Ed? Ed? We're on.
Hi.
And, and I'm I. So are you muted? Do you have any comments? You have to unmute yourself again.
Kathy?
Yes.
Do you have any comments?
Great job, Mom and Dad.
Well said. We'll, we'll sign it. And if you can stop in the town hall sometime, we can give you the proclamation.
Thank you very much for taking the time tonight, everyone.
Congratulations, Steve, Mark, Papa. I love you both.
It's great for you to follow through on that, all of you. Mr. Chairman, we'll work with the family to make sure they get that after it's signed by the board. Fantastic. Thank you, Jill. Moving back then to notification grant for the Fire and Police Department, Jill? I'll turn it over. In the spirit of good news, we have Chief LeBlanc about to give additional good news. What with it being 11 days till town meeting? And turn it over to Chief LeBlanc.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm pleased to announce that we received a notification from Comers, which is the state radio system, that the grant that we applied for, which it's a pro forma grant. We shouldn't have received the money, but we received almost all the money we requested. All the radios that we asked to be replaced were accredited. So this, combined with the funding that we have at town meeting, will complete the entire police and fire radio upgrade. So it was $133,831 for the fire department and $163,000 for the police department. And was really good news. I wasn't sure if it was going to be funded fully. You know how the state can be sometimes, but Deputy Consonine and Deputy Thornton did yeoman's work going through and tracking all the serial numbers, all the radios, doing the inventory and through their hard work. And then the, the rest of the process of verifying IDs and following up on questions that were asked, we were able to get the whole grant. So we're really in good shape going forward. And, and the nice thing is, as Mr. Powers mentioned, that going into town meeting, we know the state funding is already there. So once that's approved, we can move forward with the, with the system upgrade.
Great job. Thank you. Warming out, just reading through the list of the inventory that I'm putting together.
It was crazy. Craig, Craig did an amazing job. And I think Kevin would attest to that of just trying to track it all down. It was not, it was not easy. Serial numbers are on the bottom of radios or digitally programmed in radios, you know, trying to figure out where everything was. So it was quite a feat and we were successful. So that's good news going forward.
Congratulations. Let me ask next on the public comment, Dan or Don, could you comment on the Clean Water grant to Harwich?
Um, yes, as many people no doubt read in the newspaper that we've been granted in excess of $5 million in relation to our project in East Harwich. I'm grateful that the board had faith in me to appoint me to the Clean Waters Board in Barnstable. It, it took us 14 months to come up with an equitable formula where people in different towns, whatever their size, would get an equitable portion of this. I'm really excited about it. And frankly, I'm sure we're going to be talking about this in the future. I'd love to see this buy down our exposure for our debt in soaring because it was initially fairly a crushing load. But that in combination with the fact that the state, state revolving sewer fund had lent us money for this at 0% interest and we're still going to be eligible for principal buy downs. So it's going to make this project substantially less expensive than initially thought. So I'm really grateful because that represents about a quarter of what we have spent so far.
I agree and thank you, Don. I know just working on the bylaws was a major effort before we got to this discussion about actual money. That may have been.
I went out and read the dictionary for recreational purposes after that.
Okay. Thank you again. Moving next then to joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the Golf Committee. Joe, you want to introduce the subject and we will move on? Certainly, Mr. Chairman, I would just ask Chairman Clem Smith to go through the procedure of calling his committee to order. And so that would be calling to order and by means of a roll call. Clem, you're muted. There you go.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. In terms of a roll call, John Crook?
Yeah.
Paul White?
Present.
Jack Conley?
Present.
John Wheeler? John Wheeler, yes, present. And Steve Vala, please. Present as well. Joe, our only non-attending member, she is Martha Duffy. She is on a trip. She is still in Florida. So, you know, please note her absence. And I'd like to pay lip service to Roman Greer, our Director of Golf. He is also present. Larry, how would you like to proceed?
I would like, I think the discussion was concerning use of providing golf course to help the charitable event with Bonham High School. So I'd like for the, possibly you to go through your golf committee's discussion and action on that.
Okay, great. If I could, Joe, I'd like to do a screen share with a document, you know, that outlines in very precise terms what we have done, you know, to enhance our presentation.
So Clem, you've now been made a presenter. If you click in your application on the screen icon at the bottom and then select the screen you want to share.
Okay, thanks. Okay, can everybody see this document?
Now we can.
Okay, great. People, this is the background information for the athletic, you know, booster tournament request. And I'd like to go through it point by point simply because I want the general public to understand that the decision-making process, you know, that we've successfully utilized over the last number of years has been enormously successful. It's, it's not anything that's arbitrary. There's a lot of thought that goes into it. In this particular request, because of, of the calendar, as you probably are well aware of, these decisions for 2021 were actually made back in 2020. So I will scroll through this for you. And basically regarding the booster club request, we've held this event three times in 2017, 18, and 19, all on Columbus Day. And that was the pre-COVID era, if you will. Following golf committee policy for local charity fundraising events, the cost that's involved is, excuse me, is half the greens fees and a full card fee. This. Sorry, people. I've got a lot going on on my screen. You know, this has been the policy to date. And it's, you know, financially necessary to incorporate that kind of strategy. This event has been an 8:30 PM shotgun start. This means the course is closed until 1:30. That's five and a half hours of closure. It takes away 33 tee times and it accommodates about 132 golfers. I think it's important to note that participation by the boosters group has hovered in and around an average of 75 players. And I may be off by a couple of players here or there. But basically it's 75 versus a full field, which would accommodate 132 players. Additional revenue opportunities are promoted through sales, both in the pro shop and at the various outlets around the golf course. These sales represent a significant reduction in sale for a normal day. All tournaments also deal directly with the restaurant. And thankfully, and I appreciate the input from the Porter Selectmen, we just acquired the services again of the hot stove. However, in this COVID era, as, as mentioned at the last meeting, there are no post tournament banquets at this point in 2021 due to COVID restrictions. So basically we have had zero. As far as tournament food is concerned, what we provide is a box lunch, kind of grab and go situation. It's a minimum, but you know, it's, it serves its purpose. This tournament and all the 2021 tournaments were discussed first back in November, actually November 17th, 2020, in our golf committee meeting, where I solicited feedback from the committee before putting together the schedule for the committee for consideration and vote. And of course, this was in consultation with Roman Greer. All committee members and comments were in agreement to this slimmed down schedule due to the increase of the golf. due to the increase of the golf demand that's been put on our operation and also, of course, the COVID-19 concerns. For the record, we held no shotgun, zero events in 2020 due to COVID restrictions. The Monomoy Tournament was addressed directly, and a recommendation was made to move their event to a later date and not accept any new events. And I think it's important to realize, because I've heard a lot of, even though I've been away, I've heard a lot of rumor and innuendo that we we turned down the boosters and and we've, you know, denied them an opportunity. And basically, it might be perceived as being selfish, but the success of these events is determined, you know, by guidelines that we have to adhere to. We've got a fiduciary responsibility to the town, and, you know, we accept that gladly. So, you know, these decisions are predicated on that as well. The Harwich Chamber of Commerce event was specifically addressed as a new request, and we decided that it should not be accommodated, you know, for the reasons as stated. And as a point of information, it's kind of historic narrative. There have been no complaints in the last 10 years that I'm aware of that have come before the committee. Zero in this, you know, of this type or nature. We consistently work with groups to make accommodations to ensure that their outings are successful. And the fact that we've had such a demand, I think, is evidence of that. And, you know, key to that is a mutual agreement upon dates, you know, for the various activities. The golf committee unanimously approved the schedule presented in our, excuse me, December meeting. And based on the previous discussions that we had, we also included or solicited feedback from, you know, Monomoy Boosters and included an alternative date of 10/18. As I said, this this offering of that date, you know, we hoped would be finalized with discussions. And since this whole issue became public, you know, I I kind of feel bad that, you know, it's not being discussed, you know, within committee. And, you know, I entertain any any comments or, you know, solicit any any remarks from the selectmen at large. This is a complex issue. There's a tremendous competition, you know, for events at the Cranberry Valley operation. Everything from the Cancer Society to, you know, we've hosted, you know, the firemen, the policemen. It's it's very difficult, and we have to be selective, you know, to protect the integrity of the operation. So with that said, I I would take any questions that you might have, or you can direct them to the committee themselves or the members present and/or Roman Greer. Thanks. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Clem. I'll turn it over. I think we have a member from the Boosters Club that spoke last week who would like to speak. Just for the record, I just checked my calendar. Columbus Day is on the 11th this year, I see.
Correct.
You would be proposing a week later.
Yes, exactly. And and there are some financial advantages to that as well, you know, and, you know, I'll gladly share some of the blame. I mean, maybe that hasn't been communicated very strongly. I I know that Mr. Laramie has some, you know, very distinct opinions about, you know, the the fact that we would move, you know, that we have moved this event, but, you know.
Well, let me give Mr. Laramie a chance to, we promised him last week, we'll give him a chance to weigh in this week, who was on the agenda.
Larry, can we get back to full screen, please?
Yeah. Clem, if you can click the icon that says screen, it will take the screen away. Thank you.
I gave everyone a break.
I don't have full screen yet. I guess I've heard of it. But that's okay.
We're full screen.
I'm full screen.
Okay, it's just me then. Mr. Laramie, do you wish to comment then?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will I will start with everything that Mr. Smith obviously has said is is accurate in regards to the the tournament and how it was held. What what I think they failed to realize, and again, I am in the golf industry. I deal with I deal with charitable tournaments. I think what the committee has done with the existing tournaments there is definitely commendable. They do accommodate groups on on many different levels, and I'm not trying to say that that is the that is not my intention, and it is not the that is not the type of banter that I am trying to start around town or in other circles. That was not my intention by bringing this up with them originally or with the board. So but this this actually started, my conversations with Roman and me getting involved with the Monomoy Boosters started a couple of years ago. And last year, pre-COVID, I did get in touch with Roman to discuss the possibility of 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 being more flexible with what the what the committee was charging us for a local group that is on of a town-owned golf course. That that didn't go very far. It didn't really gain any traction. And then we kind of had the the pandemic hit, so I did not press the issue back last December, although that my original request went went, just like this one, kind of went unnoticed and kind of went away and did not get a response that I initially had hoped. But again, with everything that had happened last year, I did not push the issue. Aside with the golf course being closed, it was it was a non-issue, actually, in that in that fact. So this last year, I, you know, when when you have charitable events at golf courses, typically, the way it goes is is people, you know, you get volunteers, you have sponsors, you have people that take time out to make the day great and special, and you pick a day that works for your particular group. And there's many factors that go into that particular date. And once you find a date that works, you do your best to keep that date year in and year out because when you tend to change your tournament days and you switch weekends, you switch switch courses, you tend to lose people, and the events tend to not be as successful as they have been in the past. That that's my personal experience with it. I've dealt with a lot of charitable groups that have shotguns at multiple locations. And like I said, my my personal experience in the golf industry for 15 years is that when you do that, it it does not become as successful. You know, as we all know, this is a town-owned golf course. It's it should be accessible to the general public as well as to the season pass holders equally. Like I said, I think the the committee has done a great job in the past by allowing this event. I understand that the there are new factors that come into play now with, you know, with the fiduciary responsibility. I'm not taking light of any of those issues. However, I, you know, I did listen at the last meeting how how, you know, they're they're referring to to the range of, you know, the range is actually, year-to-date, is that is that a typical number that it would be at for for the full year from a profitability standpoint or from a gross revenue standpoint, excuse me, that the rounds are up. And I I'm not sure, I can't remember which person on the committee said it, but they were looking at the numbers, talking about how glorious it was. The the numbers look glorious, and the expectations, they're going to have a record-breaking year. So the thought that they, I I understand there's a high demand for for tee times, you know, but it was it was, they were trying to compare the holiday weekend, and it is a holiday weekend. It is the day before they they lower their rates, you know, for the for the off-season. But it, you know, they were trying to compare it to Memorial Day and Fourth of July, and I I didn't really think that that comparison was fair. And we are we are essentially talking about a Monday in October. And, you know, you're accommodating a group that this is their biggest fundraiser. A lot of the volunteers and people that partake are are business owners, local business owners on the Cape. And the schedule, like I said, it's a date that works for us. It has worked in the past, and we we are going to continue to to use that date, whether it be at this golf course or elsewhere. And the and the primary goal is to is to have the tournament, you know, locally, at the locally town-owned golf course. You know, some of those volunteers are also students. So when you say just pick another date or, you know, go to the following Monday, it's not, you know, the kids are in school. So any kid that's trying to help participate, volunteer their time, raise money for their teams and their programs that they participate in, they're now, they're going to have to either skip school or take the day off. And I know it's it's a, I'm throwing out a drastic example, but that, you know, these are the things, and every group is different. These are the things that that we have to look at as a tournament committee to try to make the event successful. So like I said, that date works for us. It has worked in the past. We usually, when when I've been involved with the events that are charitable event at at other locations, you have the event, the event's good. You at the literally at the end of the event, you look at the person that's in charge, and you just basically say, we'd like to lock in the same date for next year. And it's it's usually a pretty easy transaction. And the the golf course that's participating or allowing it is excited because they know, rain or shine, no matter what the weather brings the following year, they've got a group of anywhere from 70 to 100 golfers coming in on a Monday morning in October. I mean, it should be, in theory, a win-win for everybody involved. And, you know, when I first saw that the request had been turned down, you know, I I actually thought it was a blanket, a blanket policy with all tournaments. And as I started to look back at the at the December meeting, meeting notes and and not the minutes, the minutes for whatever reason are not posted. They've got Novembers, they get Januaries, but the December meeting minutes, I know the video is available, but those minutes don't seem to be posted online. I haven't been able to find them. So where they have that discussion, where it would be in writing, it's not it's not available. But besides that, once I found out that that was the case, I wanted to revisit why they were doing that. When I started looking at the tournament schedule that was approved, it really started to make me scratch my head and wonder what, you know, when we they start talking about fiduciary responsibilities and that it's a business, it's just a straight business decision, they only turned down two groups that they didn't either grandfather in or allow for the for the for 2021. And surprisingly enough, you know, it's it's a little mind-boggling as a as a as a parent who has kids that go to the go to the high school as well as a taxpayer, that the two tournaments that they turned down were the Monomoy Athletic Boosters, which I said this is our biggest fundraiser of the year, as well as the local Harwich Chamber of Commerce, which is all the local businesses that support the the town and and have businesses within the town. So it just, it seemed odd that out of all the two groups that they would decide, they just, you know, with businesses booming as it is and tee times that demand as it is, that the only two groups they couldn't possibly find a way to make it work like they have in the past would be two local groups. Now, I know they have obviously accommodated other local groups, and that's fantastic. But I just, it just doesn't seem to make sense that they would basically turn away. And 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 we do view this turning away because, again, you've had a successful event there, as they said, and and you're planning on coming back the following year, using that utilizing that same weekend. And this this committee has decided that they they can't find a way to make it work. And surprisingly, you've got you've got those two groups are now going elsewhere. You know, we're basically told either pick another date or go somewhere else. So we're not picking another date. I'm not sure about the Harwich Chamber of Commerce. I knew I do know they are holding your event elsewhere. We have two local groups with local taxpayers, local residents that have now decided to go elsewhere for various reasons. And the the odd thing is, is that the Chamber of Commerce, for some reason, was able to convince Captain's Course, which is right next door in Brewster, which is also a town-owned, municipally-owned golf course, they were able to open them with with, welcome them with open arms so that they can host their event there. And we were actually able to secure the same date at a private golf course also on the Cape. So you get two different communities on the Cape that are willing to welcome us with open arms, one being a private, which is obviously not the same as a municipal golf course, and then also a municipal golf course, which is set up and run very similar to the Cranberry Valley. But like I said, when I started looking at the actual tournaments that were that were approved, you know, there's there's various groups in June, July, August, May, that not only were they approved, but they're not even charging, they're not even charging a fee at all. I look at the, you know, and I mentioned this at the meeting with the with the board, with the Cranberry Valley Golf Committee, you know, some of those groups are youth organizations. And I think it's fantastic, being someone who's in the golf industry, that the the golf committee would be willing to give up tee times at no charge to help build the game of golf and grow the game of golf through the youth of of New England. It looks like the New England Junior PGA is going to be there. And all I was asking them is, why aren't the local residents, the local taxpayers' kids that live in this town with their biggest fundraiser, why aren't they being given the same consideration and the same passion to 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 find out a way to make that Monday in October work for the local kids? And it's just, again, it's very, it's it's if if October is the thing that puts them over the edge, I think that maybe there there's got to be, maybe the Board of Selectmen should really be looking more specifically on how things are are being chosen and selected over there if this is something that they just can't find a way to to make it work.
Mr. Laramie, let me let me ask, I see, let me move on and have Cindy comment, then Clem, I'll come back to your your committee. What Cindy, you, I know you want to speak to this as well.
I do, but I also don't want to be thrown under the bus. And what we have, the chamber usually has a spring event. It's the largest fundraiser for the chamber to operate. It's usually the Toast of Harwich, which is our restaurants, and we do it at the Quosset. This year, we thought outside of the box a little to stay with things that you could do outside during COVID, not knowing what was going to happen. So we tried a golf tournament, or we're trying a golf tournament. I did reach out, had a lovely visit. Clement stopped by one day and saw me, and then I reached out to Roman, unfortunately, and understanding. I mean, I'm juggling a lot with COVID for many different things. So I understood, did not push it, and just reached out. I have friends that work at Captain's. My dad used to work at Captain's. So I reached out, curiosity. They said, here, we we can do this. So we took it. Yes, would love to have it in our town. We have a full-page ad in our magazine with the golf course. We support our golf course. But it didn't work this year. Will it work next year? Possibly, and that'd be a great thing. But for this year, we needed to do a fundraiser so we can continue to do the work that we do to promote all of our town. That's the only reason we're not in town this year. But I understood what had to happen with COVID. We're pivoting all kinds of things. I'm still going to have to pivot a whole summer and fall with things that are happening now with our updates. So unfortunately for the chamber, we weren't able to. I understood it, and I just moved on because I had to continue planning our our other things to continue what we do.
Thank you, Cindy. Clem, you're all reacting, I'll ask the board members to.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, sorry, sorry for the interruption. We we did have an additional request from Ken Dixon to be heard on this matter as well. He did register earlier.
Okay. I'll ask him to weigh in now, then we'll come back to Clem.
This is Ken Dixon. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. Interestingly enough, I've sent several emails, both to Mr. Powers and Mr. McManus. Neither have paid me the courtesy of a reply, by the way, it's very disappointing. On the topic of the golf course, I've attended nearly every meeting of the golf committee for the last year. These folks are very committed, and they do an excellent job. As you've heard from Chairman Smith, they have voted unanimously on two occasions not to allow outings on holidays, as it hurts the income of the court. I support the committee's position, and I feel that you should as well. There are no bad charities, and I understand that we helped several with their fundraising outings. I think if you plan to overrule and candidly embarrass the golf committee by allowing private outings on holidays, I hope you will then at least charge them the full green fees you paid with no discounts. Why should the course lose money? Your role, I believe, is responsible selection requires you to put the best interests of the town first, not your favorite charities, and I hope you will respect and honor the work and wishes of the golf committee. They put a lot of time into this, and I've been to every committee meeting for the last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Clem, I'll turn it back to you, and then I'll for a comment, and I'll ask the board members to weigh in.
Okay, Larry.
Do you mind if I make a quick comment, Clem?
Absolutely. Roman, you're our man.
Yes.
Thanks. Very, very briefly, you know, just to break it all down simply, when when we entered into this discussion, we didn't feel that the Monomoy Booster Event, we didn't want to push them off our calendar. We still wanted to accommodate them. We didn't feel like it was the most efficient use of the golf course on that holiday. The participation numbers for that particular shotgun event are the lowest participation numbers for any shotgun we hold. There were only 60 players the first year, 68 the second year, and 600. Uh, there were only sixty players the first year, sixty-eight the second year, and seventy-seven the third year. And that just, and as, as Clem mentioned, the block of tee times that it takes up is, is a block of tee times that would normally accommodate a hundred and thirty-two golfers. So, uh, we, we didn't wanna, um, take them off our calendar. We simply asked to move them to the following Monday, which would make a lot more sense on our calendar. Uh, and then, you know, it's comparing, uh, to youth groups during the summer, those are not shotgun events. Those are afternoon blocks of tee times, an hour of tee times and an afternoon midweek. It's really not a good comparison, that, those aren't for shotgun events, uh, um, that were compared. Uh, that's all I've got, though. I just wanted to, um, bring a little clarity to the decision-making. It was, it was really that simple, that we didn't feel like it was an efficient use of that holiday where we have so much demand.
Thank you, Roman. Uh, Clem?
Uh, Larry? Yeah, thanks, Larry. You know, uh, Mr. Laramie's points are certainly well-taken. Uh, you know, because it's, it's emotional and, uh, people attach a lot of credibility to, uh, a booster's organization. They, they supplementally, uh, you know, do great things. There's no doubt about it. But, uh, you know, I guess the bottom line is, uh, we're involved in a business on behalf of the town. And it's not just the money aspect, but for example, Cindy referenced, uh, you know, the Captain's and, uh, we have a great relationship with Captain's. But just to remind everyone, folks, they have two eighteen-hole golf courses. The business model that they're predicated on, Larry, allows them the flexibility to take on, uh, group outings, uh, and, uh, as well as being able to, uh, you know, facilitate a request from their annual pass holders and the general public. So I mean, that, that gives you an insight, I think, Cindy, as to why you were able to be accommodated. And, uh, God knows, I'd love to have, you know, the Chamber, uh, uh, I mean, you guys, you, you put us on the map and we understand that. Uh, in particular, in reference to, uh, Mr. Laramie's referencing to a, a private club, if it happens to be, uh, Jason, uh, The Ridge Club, uh, I'm, I'm familiar with some of the personnel there. And, uh, The Ridge Club, for everyone's information, uh, has been faced with some very, very challenging economic circumstances. And I'm being polite, uh, they have solicited and have been very active in trying to, uh, bring groups, uh, to that golf course for the purpose of outings to supplement, uh, you know, budgetary concerns that I think they have at large. So, uh, I guess my bottom line is, uh, for better or worse, this golf committee made a decision that we felt was best for all of the town of Harwich. And we realize that we are simply an advisory group. Uh, Don, you've referenced the town charter and, and the obligation of committees and their purpose, uh, and, and what their intent is. And, and we understand that. So I mean, ultimately, the decision resides with the selectmen. So, uh, I, I think, I think actually we've kind of exhausted this, uh, topic, other than the fact that, uh, the olive branch is still out there. Uh, I, I can think of some supplemental creative things that maybe the boosters could do in conjunction with, uh, uh, you know, the, the current calendar that we have. Uh, you know, I, I think it's open for discussion. Uh, if Mr. Laramie and, and, uh, Roman wanted to pursue that further, I, I still think it could be an accommodation. But I'm sorry, that's my Shakespearean flower. I'm an idealist at heart. So Larry, uh, that's all I have to say, unless any of my committee members would like to, uh, supplement what I've said.
Yeah, or, Mr. Chairman, I, it was Jack Conley. I'd like to just offer certainly something that's influenced my decision in, in this factor. It was because of the, um, because of COVID, the demands for golf has certainly skyrocketed. And, and basically, this past year, the most common piece of feedback that we've got from the annual pass holders of the course is, I can get a tee time. And to me, the, uh, what influenced my vote on, or certainly significantly in addition to some of, um, is trying to make the people that actually are paying the money for the course, I'm, I'm certainly aware that the town is contributing as well, but the people that are paying at least half of the funds for the, uh, green fees can't get time. And, and I know it's a Monday in October, but Columbus Day weekend happens to be a very popular and busy time of the year. So that's certainly what influenced my, uh, decision as far as the vote.
Thank you. Gentlemen, anyone else, uh, on the committee who would like to speak? Okay, Larry, our hold of power.
We have one other member wishes to speak.
Yeah, Paul White.
Thank you, Clem, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity. I just want to indicate, uh, that as we approached this issue, we did it very thoughtfully and, and looked at all the aspects involved. And I would not want any member of the public to think this was done, you know, gratuitously, swiftly, or without very serious thought. We do respect the work the boosters do, and I would hope there may be an alternative way to accommodate them. But we listened to, uh, the best and highest use we could make, protecting the interest of the town and also being fair to, uh, all the folks who wanna use this course. We're very proud of the condition of the course and the hard work of all the staff there. And so we approached it really very, very respectfully, and I just wanna make that point very strongly. And I stand by the decision we made, and I hope that the selectmen will agree with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Ed?
Yeah, um, I, I just wanna throw in that, you know, um, I'm the, uh, member of the board that's liaison to the golf committee. And, uh, in that role, uh, Mr. Smith has been through the year in contact with me on the issues that, uh, have come up in front of the, uh, the golf committee. And this being one, uh, you, uh, told me what they were doing last fall and indicated what their decisions were after the first of the year. And, um, you know, uh, I told them, yeah, that I thought they seemed to have gone through a rigorous process and that, you know, uh, the decisions they're made were, uh, I think probably sound for the interest of the town. Um, you know, and, uh, so I, I would, I, I will continue to support the decision they made. Um, as to Mr. Dixon, I'm sorry that, uh, I didn't respond an email. Um, I just scrolled back through my town email, uh, back through to February, and I haven't found an email from you. Um, what, when did you send it, so I can try and locate it?
Last fall, sir.
Last fall, okay, I'll continue to scroll back.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, John, did you wish to comment? Uh, John, you're muted. I couldn't tell whether you did, uh...
He has to be unmuted.
Uh, John, you have to unmute yourself if you, uh...
John Wheeler?
John Wheeler.
Unmute yourself.
I may have been mistaken, I thought he raised his hand to speak.
I thought he had to, Larry.
He's frozen now.
There you go. You're still muted, John, if you're, uh...
John, you're still muted.
He's now closed.
Let's move on, is there, uh, uh, Don, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm more or less loathe to, uh, pull a rug out from under committees unless there's a really good reason. The only thing I would like to verify, Clem, it was said several times, uh, that, you know, you'd be swapping out the potential for, I guess, a hundred and thirty-some-odd tee times. Uh, what I'd be really curious about is, in fact, what, what were the, the real consumption of tee times, uh, over the three-year period? Was, was it in the one-thirties, or was that just the potential?
Uh, Don, that's, that's the potential. It's just predicated on, uh, you know, the, the tee time allocation based on the spacing, you know, between tee times. So in five and a half hours, when you do the math, it, it, it comes out to the hundred and thirty-two. So that's how that number's arrived at.
You have any idea what your actual use was over the last several years, or?
Uh, I, it's, it's been...
It rained, it rained those Mondays, just for the record. It actually rained, so there was, the golf course was probably happy to have us, uh, even, even at the reduced rate. The only thing I would, uh, chime in on there, Mr. McCaskill, is that while you're asking about the allocation, how many of those tee times are being allocated to season pass holders who have a reduced rate that they're paying? So they're not really going out to the general public at a hundred percent, I don't think. They're getting allocated to the Chelsea system, which actually lowers the overall impact for that group. Um, and if the numbers are small, there's different ways you can, you can adjust the shotgun. Uh, you can go earlier, and you can have a modified shotgun to allow the course to open up a little bit earlier on that particular day too, based on the numbers. But, uh, the weather has not cooperated the last few Mondays.
Mr. Chairman, let me interrupt you. If someone needs to mute themselves, or we're getting interference, uh, interferences coming in. Sorry about that, Mr. Laramie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I, I don't want anybody to read into what I just said, Coach. As far as I'm concerned, I was asking a very specific question, and yeah, it could rain. It could also be extremely sunny and, uh, everybody could be on Cape Cod and busting out the play. I can't control that, you can't control that, Clem can't control that. So I was just interested in the retrospective of actual figures, if that was just, uh, a potential figure, nothing more than that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Michael?
Yeah?
My only comment is, is based on the other board members' comments. I'm not seeing that we're going anywhere with this, and it's eight-ten, and we have about an hour and a half left of our meeting. Um, so I would respectfully ask Mr. Chair that we bring this back, unless the rest of the board does not want to. My, my only thing is, I'm hearing things come mostly out of Clem. Uh, we're running a business for the town. COVID skyrocketed, skyrocketed, can't get tee times, uh, increased golf demand. And, and all I wanna make sure is that we're not losing sight, oh, sight of what's important to this town. And, and I know that the golf committee has gotten, uh, this year in particular, we had an awful lot of emails to the Board of Selectmen, an awful lot of news articles, an awful lot of criticism based on the, uh, demand for tee times in the golf committee, uh, along with Roman Greer has done a great job trying to streamline that. I, for myself, do not wanna see us, um, lose the perspective of our base and, and these kids and booster and Chamber of Commerce, and important things to the town of Harwich. I have a whole host of questions that I'm not gonna bore everyone with tonight or extend this meeting. I will put it into an email through the town administrator to Clem and to Roman. They can bring it back to the committee. But I'd like to know more about the tournaments that are approved and what we're doing for kids, specifically kids of the town of Harwich, um, as, as a golf committee. I'm by no means saying you're not doing anything. And, and, and I'm certainly not gonna feel bad as a board member. Uh, I'm not looking to sweep the rug out, I think it was put from the, uh, and embarrass the golf committee that's never been an intent. But when we have concerned residents and people emailing and calling us, um, as, as we had meetings, several meetings with you all about tee times, we're gonna bring it forward, and that's our duty to bring it forward. So I will not feel bad about that. Uh, but again, I don't wanna extend the meeting tonight. I do have a list of questions that I'd like to ask, and I don't see the board voting to, uh, change your decision tonight. And I appreciate the amount of thought that went in, but went into it and the explanation from you, Clem. But as, as to, to my comment to the Board of Selectmen is, what's important to the town? What, and, and it's not a business. Uh, you have to run it like a business, but what is, um, excuse me, John, try and be a little respectful. Um, we can see your face and we can read your lips. So as much as it's a business, it's also a town-owned golf course. And, and the whole town should reap the benefits of this golf course. And, and, and as I said, thank you for the amount of work that you put into the, um, decision on this. But I will forward along my, uh, my questions, and I won't feel bad.
Uh, Don?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Michael, don't misunderstand what I was saying. I could be convinced either one way or the other, but I definitely agree with your comments. And I'd be looking forward to hear the answers to the questions because, uh, the golf course, it, it historically, I am not sure whether would it have been approved at the ballot to be able to be built if it was just solely a money-making endeavor and that was all that was going into it. So, um, I encourage you, uh, folks to seriously address what Michael's gonna be asking, and perhaps we can come to some sort of resolution of this. But recognize that it's not a pure business, uh, nothing that the town does is a pure business. Uh, it's ultimately, it's taxpayer money.
I don't think anyone suggested it's a pure business in the remarks any of the members have said. They said it's a factor going into it, and they tried to appreciate the, uh, the impact of all the town. I don't mind more questions, but...
In their responses when Michael asked the question.
We can, uh, I have no problem, you know, we need to ask the questions, but I don't want it to sound fair to, I think, all concerned to prolong this forever too, though. So what, what timing are you talking about?
I, I, I would, I would move right now to support the golf committee's decision on this event because of the date and time and because this, the decision's already been made. My point was, um, the youth in this town are extremely important. And I, and, and one of my most important questions is gonna be, what do we do for the youth in this town? And, and quite honestly, as, as we continue to talk about COVID skyrocketing and lack of tee times, then I'm gonna wanna talk more about reducing the membership from out-of-town guests so that we have more room for the, the people of the town of Harwich to use this golf course. And that's a decision in, in another longer meeting. I would allow you, again, back to this board, we put the pressure on the golf committee. We put the pressure on Roman here, career. And it's up to us at this point, if residents aren't happy with the amount of time they get to use it, to reduce the out-of-town membership and open the golf course up so that our Chamber of Commerce isn't going elsewhere and our booster clubs aren't going anywhere elsewhere, and that residents of town Harwich have access to the golf course other than middle to end of October. And that'll be my final statement. So I move that we, uh, stand by the golf committee's decision, uh, not to allow the event on that date this year.
There a second?
Second.
And Michael, uh, thank you for that explanation. I fully support bringing this back, as you, as you've mentioned, I'm sure we all do. We've had a motion of a second. Here in all the discussion, I'll take a roll call vote. Ed?
All right.
Don?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
And I am I.
Larry, I just wanna thank, uh, Jason, uh, Laramie for, for bringing this forward and, and for speaking tonight. Jason, it didn't fall on deaf ears. Often the board is, uh, told that things fall on deaf ears. I think that there is an issue that we need to address. Uh, I just don't see changing a decision made by the golf committee right now, response.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it as well.
Uh, Jason, just one last comment. Sometimes, uh, these, uh, your point of view was well-taken, and you did it respectfully and was well-thought-out discussion. And that's much appreciated as well.
Thank you.
Moving next on the agenda is, Joel, is the, uh, your recommendation on N-Star.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, this was the Assistant Town Administrator, uh, sitting in my stead, as has been the practice in the past. Um, I do, would recommend that the board approve, um, this request, uh, subject to the staff recommendations. And you'll see in the memorandum, that would be first that they, um, finalize, that they ever source finalize the process through the Conservation Commission, and that the comments from, uh, Rose Manager, Chris Nickerson, um, also be incorporated into the approval.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
If I may?
Yes.
I move that we approve the Assistant Town Administrator's recommendation to grant permission to N-Star Electric Company to install four six-by-ten-by-eight manholes labeled as one-zero-two-one-eight slash zero-four-five, one-zero-two-one-eight slash zero-three-five, one-zero-two-one-eight slash zero-two-five, and one-zero-two-one-eight slash zero-one-five, as well as to request permission to locate underground cables, conduits...
and 10218 slash 015, as well as to request permission to locate underground cables, conduits, and manholes, including the necessary sustaining protecting fixtures in under, along, and across Lothrup Avenue, Harwich, as documented in EverSource Energy Work Order Number 4706478 dated March 1st, 2021, and subject conditions from town staff, as presented.
There a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, I'll go with the roll call. Don?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Uh, next on the agenda is I sent and, uh, Don already, uh, pointed out egregious error I made, so I changed the one assignment. And I apologize for that, Don. I wasn't paying as close attention as I should, but.
Mr. Chair.
We don't, Michael?
I move that we, we vote to assign 2021 annual town meeting articles to members of the Board of Selectmen for their review. Uh, actually, I'm going to take away for their review. Annual town meeting articles to members of the Board of Selectmen as presented by Chairman Ballantyne.
Second.
Discussion?
Larry.
Don?
Yeah, one quick thing, Larry. I wouldn't want to pass up a bully pulpit, uh, here. Got, the item in question for the public's edification had to do with me taking on the responsibility for speaking on behalf of the, revolving funds article. And not only don't I agree with, you know, the burgeoning revolving funds, but we need to have a discussion in this coming year about where we're going with that because it's just out of control. Uh, second, whatever these lists are, uh, especially since there's so many people who've been rolling into town under Covid and everything, they need to understand the assignments. We don't always talk if not, if, if we're not needed. And, uh, anybody on the Board of Selectmen beyond the assigned, uh, people can also speak on behalf of these articles.
Thank you for that, Don.
Larry, only, only discussion I have is I would ask that we post this, um, that each, each board member get a fresh email with what the actual assignments are and that we post it on the town website so the, uh, residents can go to it and see which board members they may have questions for ahead of town meeting.
Uh, Joe, we can do that, I think.
Yes.
All right, we have last roll call then.
Larry?
Yeah, yes, Ed?
Um, there, there was one, one article, the very last one that was unassigned and I would like to have, uh, that assigned to me.
Okay. There's no objection. I'll do that. You'll get surprised articles then. We have a, uh, goes a roll call then, Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm I.
Chair, I move that we vote to authorize the chair to sign the 2021 Annual CC-213 Recertification of the Community Rating System known as CRS.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, I'll go again with the roll call. Michael?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm I.
Mr. Chair, if I can continue?
Yes, please.
I move that we authorize the chair to sign the EverSource Schedule Z Form for Net Metering Service.
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, if, if Joe could give a very brief description of what net metering service for the public, that would be, uh, I think that's warranted, but.
Uh, yep. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, Selectman McCaskill. Uh, very quickly, this agreement would authorize the town through the Golf Department to send excess power that's generated from the solar grids at the golf course to other areas, uh, that the town has, um, to the town's other EverSource accounts. So it allows us to share the solar power gained, uh, amongst and throughout the town through the various areas that we have.
Thank you.
With that, I'll ask for a roll call. Michael?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm I.
Mr. Chair, if I may continue?
Yes, please.
Move that we vote to approve the donation and installation of the Guild of Harwich Artists' mystery painting puzzle at the Cultural Center.
Second.
I'm like, um, this looks like fun, but, uh, we don't have time for a discussion. So I'll go for a roll call. Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm I.
And Larry, Larry, if, if we could just ask if anyone is on the call that, that wanted to make a brief comment about this, and I say brief only because of time, because this is very important and this is a great donation, so.
There's a, uh, well, you, you made that request. Does anyone on wishes to comment? Okay. Michael, you wish to continue on the next, uh, items?
I do. Uh, Larry, if I can, if I can run this, I, I, I would feel more comfortable running these one at a time. I noticed the police chief is on the, uh, on, on line tonight, uh, and, and I'm done talking here. I know Joe Powers wants to speak before I do, but I, I do want to take these up one at a time, uh, so that I can ask my normal questions.
Uh, I think that's, I agree. That's a proper approach to take them one at a time.
Joe?
So you want, you want Joe to lead? Joe, do you want to lead that?
Joe does his hand up.
Uh, yes, thank you, um, Selectman McCaskill, Chairman Ballantyne. Just to update the board and the public, um, after the agenda was posted, we did receive applications from Jake Rooney's La Alouette and Lighthouse Cafe. Those applications will be heard by the board at your next week's meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Excellent. Uh, so, uh, the following is a, is a list of, uh, of establishments that wish to continue the use of their expanded outdoor table service. And my opening comments are, uh, at least my opinion, this was a Covid relief package, uh, for lack of better terms, to the businesses. And, and certainly the Board of Selectmen in Harwich went above and beyond, uh, what a lot of other towns did on Cape Cod. We really allowed for, uh, for some expansion. Now, in the packet tonight is a list, uh, with the applications for each and every one of these establishments. Two of these establishments, uh, Lanier's Bar and Grill and Ember Pizza. By, by, uh, a quick visual look like they've already put up their expanded table service. And, and I want to say again, this is a privilege, not a right. This is not like liquor licenses, entertainment licenses, and this was the Board of Selectmen reacting to Covid and, and giving as much as we could give back to our businesses. Many of these, uh, again, all of them have times in the packet, so if board members, as we go through these, have questions, but I've, I've looked at these, um, and, and I've read the times, and I, for one, would like the police chiefs, um, nod on whether or not there were, there was any trouble or any violations or any, any concerns that the police chief may have, as well as other board members as I read these. So my intent is to read them as a motion and then when we get into discussion, um, ask the police chief's comments, if, if that pleases the board.
Uh, go ahead, Michael.
Okay, I move that we approve the 400 East 1421 Route 39, um, outdoor table, expanded outdoor table service, uh, as, as approved in 2020 with all previous restrictions recorded.
Second.
Second. Uh, Chief, you wish to, uh, we're going to, I'm recalling you in each one, so we have, uh, a separate look at that.
Joe, if, if, if we can, before you do that, I, I think based on Don's facial expression, he had a question about my motion and then the, and the town administrator has his hand up.
Okay, I missed that. Don?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, uh, you had mentioned earlier, and in the meeting, we got a report over this. The governor's guidance has changed, uh, uh, just today. It appears to be a fluid situation. I am not really eager to give blanket approvals without some sort of sunset, uh, by bump or whatever, uh, on this because if it comes to the point where they get 100% seating, I don't want to get this to the, you know, to the point with all these businesses where they just feel that it's a right, uh, as auxiliary seating and that's where they go in the future. Uh, because I don't believe that this board and probably other boards around the state are going to be doing that. At some point in time, this is going to be over and everybody reverts back to what their original premises were.
Uh, clarification on that. You're saying that if we do this another year, they may take it for granted, go in the future, or we should go ahead and address this year?
I am not sure that there's a need to do this for the whole year because things are changing so quickly with vaccinations that I, I find it hard to believe that the validity of this, the underpinning of why we're doing it, is going to exist even in six months. Down there, which this will be my fourth mark.
Someone else is, uh, uh, Bob, you have a comment?
No. Joe Powers, Larry.
I'm sorry, Joe. I need to look at my screen better.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, uh, in conjunction with Selectman Howell's question, um, I do have information on that. Uh, but I also did want to follow up with a question of my own, uh, from a procedural standpoint. Um, you may recall that this is, um, as, as Selectman Howell has indicated, that this process and this allowance ties back to an order released by Governor Baker in 2020. Uh, that order stipulates within it, and I believe it is still valid. Uh, and we have not received information today that has changed that, but that all extended, all expanded premises approved pursuant to the governor's order are only effective through 60 days after the end of state of emergency and revert to their original license premises on that date. So as with many of the orders of Governor Baker, um, all parties have been advised that there is a stale-datedness to this should the governor declare the state of emergency, uh, to be ending. Um, and so it, it is end of emergency plus 60 days. Uh, again, if we get any further information from, uh, Governor Baker and/or ABCC, uh, we'll get that to the board and then out to the general public. My, my procedural question for the board is.
Can I ask you a follow-up on that question? Is, is the end of the state of emergency now, uh, August 1st?
We, we don't know that to be certain yet, but that is the suspicion at this time.
Uh, go ahead. Sorry, just wanted to clarify that.
Um, I believe Selectman Howell may have a question.
Yeah, before, before Mr. Powers goes on, in any of these motions, can we make sure that that particular language is there, that it's entirely premised on, uh, the, the governor's emergency order and that at such time plus 60 days, uh, that that is rescinded, then so is our approval.
Joe?
So, um, to further that and to get to my question, you'll see in the packet that the application that we developed last year with this requires the applicant for extended, uh, continued expansion of outdoor table service to indicate the dates from start to end of the season when they expect to utilize this. So I was going to ask procedurally if the board could make reference to the dates specifically, uh, listed in the application or 60 days post-end of emergency, uh, whichever is preferred by the board. In other words, there are a number of applications here that fall well within the timeframe, um, if we anticipated the state of emergency, uh, perhaps to be rescinded as early as August 1st. So you may want to contemplate the specific dates and then take any other action.
Whichever is shorter.
Whichever is shorter.
Right. My statement was whichever the board wishes to use, correct?
Mine isn't that. Mine is whichever happens first.
Understood.
Uh, yeah, agreed. Uh.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, I know, uh, Mr. Nickerson was looking to be recognized. I would also just advise the board, uh, that Joe Ganley, uh, sent in a request earlier, uh, to also be recognized on this, uh, topic.
Okay. Uh, Bob, do you wish to, uh, speak now? It doesn't appear you're muted, but I can't hear you.
Oh. Is your microphone on?
Uh, Bob, while you're, uh, working with that, let me go to, uh, Mr. Ganley. And, uh, Joe, do you wish to speak?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, uh, very briefly, um, uh, as a, I know you're not on this motion, but as a nearby neighbor, I, uh, I strongly oppose the extension of outdoor dining at the Port Restaurant and Bar on, uh, Main Street.
Yeah, let's come back to that, Joe, when we get to the port, if you will.
Okay, that's fine.
Uh, just for the, just for everybody included, I will ask for comments, uh, from the public then before, or, or, before the motion is, uh, or maybe after the motion is second, but I will not just call on, I will call for public as well.
Yeah, I agree, Michael. Once a second and then we'll have the discussion. You'll have a chance then. Uh, Michael, do you wish to, uh, proceed then with, uh, with the language that Joe and Don have recruited?
Start from scratch.
Excuse me, before you, Michael, let me interrupt you. Don, did you have one more point?
No, that's what I wanted to make sure is what motion he actually wants to put forward.
Right.
And I'll withdraw my second.
Thank you. Thank you, Ed.
Okay.
I move that we continue use of the outdoor expanded outdoor table service previously approved in 2020 for the 400 East Restaurant 1421 Route 39 with the dates specific in their application or the governor's orders, uh, in conju-, or in conjunction with the governor's orders, uh, 60 days after, uh, state of emergency is lifted.
Whichever comes first.
Whichever comes first.
Second.
Thank you. Is that a second?
And now, now I'm going to go to comment, if I may, Larry, and I'm going to, uh, start with the police chief and, and actually a question to the police chief. Is there any problems with this application, chief?
Uh, we've had no problems with the 400 East.
Okay.
Okay.
Any members of the.
And, and, uh, any, uh, any public, uh, input? Hearing none?
Oh, wait, we're, we're looking on, uh, Mr. Nickerson is, is, uh, trying to talk still.
We're, uh, still not hearing you, Bob. If you don't have a choice, uh, you can call us on the, uh, on your phone. At least we can hear you.
Okay, Larry. Larry, I think we can move on for a vote for this and if, if Mr. Nickerson objects, we can make.
These, uh, Mr. Nickerson's giving up, it sounds like at the moment. Well, I'll take a roll call on the 400 East. Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm I. Moving on then, Michael?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve, uh, continue use of their expanded outdoor table service previously approved by the Board of Selectmen in 2020 with dates specific to their application or in conjunction with the governor's orders, whichever comes first.
Second.
Which restaurant?
Oh, this was, uh, sorry, Cape, Cape Sea Grill, 31 C Street. And, and then, uh, Larry, do you want to take it from there and ask the chief and the public or?
I do. I do ask, uh, Chief, uh, any concerns with this application?
No, we've had no issues with the Cape Sea Grill.
Thank you, Chief. Any comments from the, uh, people listening in? Uh, Joe, I don't want to ignore you each time. I assume you will raise, you'll let me know if you have a comment.
Indeed, and I believe Mr. Nickerson may have arrived by phone.
Okay. Uh, Bob?
Yeah, I don't, I don't need to talk now. I just wanted to be ready to talk. That's all.
Okay, we'll.
Thank you.
Let us know.
Yep.
Larry?
This, there's no other comment? And we have the Chiefs, uh, Ed?
Yeah, just, just a note, you know, on, on setting the dates that these are effective to, uh, the, um, if it does run, uh, through the end of of the governor's declaration of emergency and 60 days after, on the 61st day after, if the, the applicants haven't suspended or dismantled their expanded seating, they will be on that day in violation of their liquor license and subject to all, uh, all hearings that, that may require.
Right.
Larry?
Thank you. Yeah, Michael?
And with that said, I'd really like not to read, uh, these lengthy motions for each and every one of these restaurants, and I think the board can agree that we can all see the dates that are on the application. Uh, and with what Ed just said, I'm very comfortable with not, uh, mentioning the declaration because. he's right, once he lifts it, they have 60 days and then they're, then they can't have it. So if the board's okay with me just referencing their application packet, I'm fine with that.
The minutes, Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure that's read into each of the motions that when it goes into print.
Okay, Joe, can you take care of that?
We'll note that, sir.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion then in the second, I'll take a roll call, Michael?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
I'm I, Ed?
Aye.
Next, Cape Side Kitchen.
Okay, moving on, I move that we approve the continued use of expanded outdoor table service previously approved by the Board of Selectmen in 2020 for Cape Side Kitchen, 537 Route 28.
Second.
Chief?
No issues with the Cape Side Kitchen, Mr. Chair.
Any comments from those participating?
Oh.
Moving on, we'll take a roll call, both in, Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Michael? And I'm I.
Mr. Chair, I approve, I move that we approve continued use of their expanded outdoor table service previously approved by the Board of Selectmen in 2021, I mean 2020, for Ember Pizza, 600 Route 28.
Second.
Second. Again, chief, I'll go to you.
Mr. Chair, in 2020, we had zero noise complaints at Ember and we had no issues related to expanded outside seating.
Okay, any other discussions?
Mr. Chair, my only comment is, previous comment when we opened this topic, and there was two restaurants I mentioned, this was one of them that appears that the outdoor seating is already set up, also looks like there's an expanded fence around it, not sure if the site plan, the site plans that we required, which were two dimensional zones, if I remember correctly, has been updated with the town, but I would ask on, on both of these restaurants that they, that they understand that this is a right, not a privilege, and that we're supposed to ask the town before we just erect things pertaining to this anyway, and again, because it's a right, it's not a right, it is a priv-, it's a privilege.
Yep, Ed?
Mr. Chair, and, and to the extent that anything has changed in their layout from last year, I request that they update the sketch that they've submitted.
Okay. Mr. Powers, could you make those requests and ask for that information?
They've, they've been noted and staff and I will work on that, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this, this is Attorney Tomlinson, I'm happy to answer those questions on the record if that pleases the board.
Okay.
As you may know, Ember owns that property and they don't have the ability to store picnic tables, so the picnic tables have remained in place all through the winter. They've only been open outside for, I think, three days and they have limited their seating to the outdoor patio, which is reflected in the offset seating plan previously approved by this board and the Board of Health. So while those tables are located out there, they haven't moved since last year, there hasn't been any change to the seating plan, they just simply haven't been stored for the winter.
Okay.
Larry?
Mr. Thompson, Bob? Mr. Nickerson?
Oh, sorry, I want to, I want to say that I, I think you should move forward with allowing Ember to have the outdoor seating, they did a good job last year, they have not expanded their space, they just put a fence in instead of a rope, so they didn't add more tables, and they were good last, last summer and hope they will be this summer.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Nickerson.
Any other, any other comments? Michael, do you have one?
I just wanted to comment and thank Attorney Tomlinson for the, for the answers, and just, just so he knows, it's really just to be consistent and to make sure that we're getting change diagrams if things have changed, but thank you for your answer.
I appreciate that, Mr. McCaskill, and I'm happy to help, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, I'll go for a roll call.
Mr. Chair, point of order?
Yes, Don?
We've been asking the chief for-
Chief, he did comment this time.
He did.
It's been confusing, the waters just hurt.
Okay, sorry, but we did, the chief did comment. I'll go for a roll call then, Don?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm I.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the expanded outdoor table service, which was previously approved by the Board of Selectmen in 2020 for Lanyard Bar and Grill, 429 Route 28.
Is there a second?
Second.
Chief, I've lost your picture, there you are, someone left or came. Comment, chief?
No issues with the lanyard, Mr. Chair.
Any comments from the, those listening in? I'll go, I'll ask, Joe?
Just a question to the board, you'll see that they've requested service beginning April 1st, just want to understand that the board is clear that service should not begin until after this vote, so the earliest that would happen presumably would be April 28th, 2021.
Thank you for that clarification.
More for the board to clarify or confirm that, please.
Michael, maybe the best way to do that is to include that in your motion?
So move.
Ed, will you second that?
Yep.
And, and Joe, I just would, I would, I would reiterate my comments about the last, the last vote, these things shouldn't be erected until the board approves them, shouldn't be done after the fact, and ownership should know that this is not a right, it's a privilege.
Thank you.
Okay, oh, we didn't vote.
We didn't vote yet, take a roll call, vote, I'll show you, Michael?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm I.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve continued expanded outdoor table service previously approved by the Board of Selectmen in 2020 for Mad Minnow, 554 Route 28.
Second.
Second. Chief, any, your comments?
No issues with the Mad Minnow, Mr. Chair.
Any discussion from others? Hearing none, I'll go with a roll call, Michael?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm I.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve continued use of outdoor expanded table service previously voted by Board of Selectmen in 2020 for the Seal Pub, 703 Main Street.
Second.
Chief, again?
Mr. Chair, the law reflects two incidents on the Seal Pub for noise, they both do not seem to be related to expanded outside seating, it was inside music, the doors left open, or the windows were left open.
Okay, thank you for that. Any discussion from elsewhere, others?
Larry, I guess my only question is, based on the two noise complaints, what triggers those two noise complaints being brought before the Board of Selectmen or, or Town Administration to either send a warning or are the first two warnings by the police department?
It's usually done by the police department, Mr. Chair.
What triggers it getting back to the Board of Selectmen?
A memo from us to the, to the board.
Thank you, chief.
Okay. With that, I'll ask for a roll call, Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm I.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve continued use of outdoor expanded tables, expanded outdoor table service previously approved by the Board of Selectmen in 2020 for Three Monkeys Street Bar, 554 Route 28, Suite B.
Second.
Chief, your comment?
No issues with the Three Monkeys, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, chief. Any other discussion? Ask for a roll call, I'm I, Don?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And Mr. Chair, I read a positive motion, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve expanded outdoor table service previously approved by Board of Selectmen in 2020 for the Port Restaurant Bar, 541 Route 28.
Is there a second?
Second.
Chief?
Hey, Mr. Chair, I have concerns over the port regarding expanded outside seating, as my email to you earlier today reflected, there's been multiple noise complaints as a, as a result of what I believe is the, the big tent in the rear parking lot, I've received a number of correspondence from neighbors who live nearby, we've had multiple noise complaints, many of them including crowd noise, which is a direct result of the people under the tent being loud even after 10 o'clock, sometimes much closer to closing time, and that is very concerning to the neighbors.
Thank you, chief. Other comments, Joe, I think this is one you want to weigh in.
Yeah, and only just very briefly, Mr. Chairman, I would agree with the chief's characterization, I'm, I live directly across the street from that parking lot, I know I've submitted lots of information to the board detailing my experience with this particular establishment, I won't rehash all that here, I would also note that you have a hearing that's being planned for, I think, next Tuesday to discuss issues related to this establishment. I would suggest to you that the outdoor, the expansion of outdoor activity last year was a complete game changer in terms of noise and, and not in a positive way, it made a huge difference in the amount of noise, and that's even absent amplified music, the crowd noise was at times unbearable. So I won't rehash all the testimony except to say I could not agree with the notion that this is a privilege, not a right, I would suggest to the board respectfully that this establishment abused that privilege last year, and that at the very least, you should postpone granting this expanded outdoor footprint until after the hearing that's scheduled for next Tuesday. Thank you.
Joe, just, just very briefly, this is, this is a completely separate act from the here at this point, Don?
I understand, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I was just going to suggest that, I understand it's a completely separate act, but I think the testimony, the detailed testimony that you're likely to hear at next Tuesday's hearing will certainly be relevant to it.
Don?
Mr. Chair, I actually agree with Mr. Ganley, I think it's premature, waiting seven days would not be an onerous problem to the owner, we can't rescind this, I mean, I think that it really is part and parcel everything that's going on there, and if we decide that there's not anything going on there, we could easily approve this in seven days without any great harm being done to that business, I can't vote for this tonight, I just won't vote for this tonight.
My, my point is, we do have a motion, but my point would be is that we could approve this license and not allow the tent and taking action.
It can't be rescinded.
We haven't voted on it yet. Bob?
Yeah, Larry, I don't, I don't see how the Board of Selectmen can vote on this with what happened last summer, it's totally uncalled for. I supported Ember, they did a great job on that end, I don't know why they couldn't have done a better job on this end. Everyone's seen the videos, how you can say that you want to do that again and you can't stop it halfway through the summer is crazy thinking. So I would appreciate you not approving this.
Right, thank you, Bob. Ed?
Mr. Chair, based on the comments that have just been made in discussion by the police chief, Mr. Howell, might like a substitute motion that we table this matter until the meeting of April 10th.
Mr. Chair, this is-
I have to ask that if, Michael, you send in your motion?
I, I'm, I'm a little confused, and parliamentary procedure is fairly, fairly simple here, if you don't support it, vote no. So I, I'm not sure where the, where the conflict here is, and we're listening to testimony, and I can see that Attorney Tomlinson's still online, and I'm sure he's going to ask to speak and maybe try and clarify some things, so I do believe unless Ed wants to vote of making a motion and getting a second and then voting on that motion going back, no board member sitting here tonight is obligated to vote in favor. It was a positive motion that doesn't have to pass, so with that, I'll leave it alone, and if, Larry, if I may, if it's my turn, I will express my concerns.
Please, go ahead.
Okay, so I, I've got a lot of phone calls about this particular location and, and nothing, nothing related to, I'm not, I'm not going to relate anything to entertainment, but looking at the back parking lot and looking at the setup last year, the tent, and we approved that, a tent, and I don't think we ever really grasped that it was going to encompass the entire parking lot. I also believe that part of the parking lot has been removed to create something else, so this business effectively now has no parking, and if we go back through the list of everything else that we approved tonight, every other business has parking, every other business was put to have Jersey barriers in front of that, every other business has a means to get deliveries without a truck blocking a road. This business is now asking us to, to do away with their parking that there's, that they were, the restaurant approved to have parking, so not only is all of the patrons for inside and outside table service going to be parked, parked someplace else, so are the employees, and that really was not what this was approved on. I also do agree with Mr. Ganley's comment about the increased noise, and, and we have received several complaints, and further, we, we did give a, a pretty, pretty long latitude for people to expand their outdoor seating, I don't ever remember anything coming before the board to add a shed, a fairly large shed, I don't ever remember any coming before the board or any diagram to add a menu platform, so again, Mr. Tomlinson's lights on, and maybe he could shed some light on why the applicant isn't using the shell area off of the deck to, to have their outdoor seating for the restroom, why, why this has to encompass-
Thank you, Mr. McCaskill, Mr. Chairman, may I be heard?
You may.
We're, we're a little out of sequence, you, you allowed Mr. Ganley and Mr. Nickerson to speak before the board's discussion, and now I'm speaking after the board's discussion, but I do want to address a couple of the comments that the board has made, in, in particular, I, I'm not aware of these videos that Mr. Nickerson references about what happened last summer, and everyone has seen the videos, the, the, the chief of police indicated that he's received numerous complaints and has spoken with, with numerous people, and apart from what is to be included in next week's packet, again, I'm not informed about that, the licensee is not informed about that, and to Mr. McCaskill's concern about him receiving lots of phone calls and the board not grasping the size of the tent, I'll simply comment that, you know, that the fact that the tent occupies the back of the parking lot, that location was approved by the building official, likewise, the shed that was built, the merchandise shed that was constructed over the winter is not considered a structure, that follows the same decision by the Board of Appeals regarding the outdoor bar constructed at Perks, and in fact, the shed, and we'll get into this next week if necessary, the shed is a standalone structure, it has no plumbing, it has, the only thing that is used for is to store merchandise for sale, T-shirts, they've used it to store menus, they've used it to store hand sanitizer, paper towels, cleaning supplies, because the only location that allowed for safe social distancing was the back of the parking lot, they have not expanded the size of the parking lot, they have spread oyster shells as part of landscaping, but the location of the tent, its proximity to the neighbors that live back there, the residents that live back there, my understanding is that Mr. Ganley claims that he resides back there, but in fact, doesn't own property, isn't a resident of the town of Harwich, and so while I appreciate his concern, the, the board should, should recognize that we're here to hear concerns of residents, and I don't believe Mr. Ganley is a resident. Also, it appears that there's been numerous communications with the board that aren't included in the packet, that there has been no notice to the licensee about those communications, and I'm simply at a loss to be able to speak to them when I'm not afforded that notice, and I think it's inappropriate for the board to delay voting on this matter when it has approved various- when it has approved various other locations which lack parking or access for deliveries. Importantly, Three Monkeys, Perks, Cape Seagill, the Mad Minnow, none of those locations offer any real parking. None of those locations offer the ability to be able to have delivery vehicles. They all use the street, and in fact, Perks uses Route 28 for delivery vehicles. At least C Street is used by Cape Seagill and the port. And I would note, I would note, Mr. Chairman, that the, the governor's executive order permitted this, and I can appreciate the board's view that this is a privilege and not a right, but it is a privilege that is granted by executive order. And that executive order, I think, limits the board's ability to be able to condition that privilege. And so I appreciate the opportunity to be heard, and I just wanted to raise those issues. I don't believe it's appropriate to delay a vote in favor of this approval in light of everything else that is on-
Okay, Michael?
Okay, with all due respect to Attorney Tomlinson, this is a public meeting, not a public hearing, and I know you know the difference. And the chair decides who, who talks when. You don't get to decide sequence of what's right or what's wrong. I'll leave that at that. As far as documents and email goes, we, we, we didn't have that in the packet. We don't need to have that in the packet. As elected officials in town, you could, you could probably assume, or a reasonable person could assume that people, people approach us and complain. As far as Three Monkeys getting their deliveries and Mad Minnow out on Route 28, I don't think so. They have a parking lot, and they have municipal parking lot. So you can make that argument in whatever appeal you're going to have next, but, and we also had our police chief. I have a great deal of respect for our police chief. Our police chief, I believe every piece of information he gives us is accurate. And, and for you to say that we should discount that and vote, I guess it's your job and why you're here. But I don't, I don't see things the same as you. And this is a public meeting, not a public hearing. The chair decides who talks.
Okay, we, we have a motion in a second.
Mr. Chairman, could I just say one thing very quickly, one sec?
No, I, I'm, I'm, I'll hold this off now if you will.
Mr. Chairman, it's eight minutes-
I'll ask for a roll call. Michael?
Joe Powers looking to speak, Larry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I just want to put on the record, there was a statement made by a previous speaker regarding whether the board had the right under the governor's order. I just want to remind the board that this, these actions this evening are for outdoor expansion of table service. It comports with Governor Baker's Order Number 50, which you may recall states in part under Section 1 issued last fall. Before approving any request made under this order or extending a prior approval issued pursuant to Section 4 of COVID-19 Order Number 35, a town may modify the scope of any prior approval issued pursuant to Section 4 of COVID-19 Order Number 35 as the town deems proper and appropriate, including without limitation modifying the terms of an earlier granted approval to address potential issues with snow removal, pedestrian traffic, or similar concerns. I would argue on behalf of the board that the board can modify these requests previously through the actions that you're taking this evening, and that is supported by Governor Baker's Order Number 50.
Thank you for that clarification, and Don?
Yeah, but, thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to make mention of at least two things. If we're not going to be waiting until next week. The first one is regardless of what lawyer Tomlinson is saying, I don't really care whether it's a permanent structure or not. It occupies site plan parking spaces, and that's not covered in the governor's order. It isn't for the purpose of serving food. Moreover, the bars, originally, we had no outside bars. There's two bars there, and I'm a little disappointed as their lawyer, if you're talking about not seeing the videos, their Instagram account actually advertises the naughty bar and all the activities that we're talking about tonight, and I really believe that this should have been part and parcel of the discussion next week because of that. But this is absolutely, inextricably tied with how this has grown without authorities granted by the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen never knew that that structure was going to be plunked in the parking lot. The planning board had approved parking spaces based on the capacity of the building, and I don't know anything in the governor's order that allows us to start saying that you can put ancillary activities in conjunction with eating out, out there. So again, I'm not going to vote for this tonight. If we wanted to take it up as part of the discussion next week, that's fine. But if it's, if it's here tonight, there's no way I'm voting for it.
Mr. Chairman, I need to respond-
Just one comment to Don's point. We have a motion, we don't have to vote for the motion. So you can, we can vote against the motion and then move it, but we should, we should vote on this, yes or no? We can all vote no, we wish.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one quick rebuttal to some factual misstatement by Mr. Howell, I may. Just quickly, Mr. Chairman, first and foremost, the, the shed that is located outside or on the premise does not occupy any parking spots. It is actually on earth and land, so it does not take up any parking spots. Secondly, there is no second bar outside. There is only the one bar that is permitted by the town. This reference to there being multiple outside bars, I do not know where that comes from.
Instagram. Thank you, that's, we can, we have enough input on this, I think, to move. Ed?
And just a comment, you know, this is a public meeting, and we routinely take any comments from any member of the public that has a reasonable, responsible comment to make. We don't require residency requirements or poll taxes to allow you to comment to us. It's open to all of the public.
And Mr. Ganley is saying-
At this point, Mr. Tomlin, I'm moving on now. I'm going with a roll call. I'll start. My, my vote is no. Don?
No.
Ed?
No.
Michael?
No.
Okay, the entertaining motion to, we can, we'll have to deal with this tonight. If we can take a factual motion to postpone it for a date certain.
We just made a motion to not, I made a motion to approve, and we just voted no to approve. It's over and done unless somebody wants to make a motion to bring this back at another time. Right now, we've denied the expansion of outdoor table service to the board.
We'll, we'll leave it there then. I want to give people the option to move it ahead if they want, wanted to.
Okay, Mr. Chair. Next motion, Castaways. Joe, can you tell me, Castaways didn't do any outdoor table last year, did they?
Let me just check the roster from 2020.
Joe, on your roster, having outdoor service last year. I don't, I don't recall that, but I don't drive by there that often, I guess.
I just don't want to make a motion to let them continue. I'd rather make a motion to approve a new application if it's a new application and make sure that the police department has no objections and that the town has received the appropriate documents to, the two dimensional drawing, etc.
Okay, Joe?
So I do see in the document, we had a spreadsheet that we're tracking this throughout 2020, the updated document for expansion of outdoor services dated November 24th does indicate that Castaways had sought outdoor table service, outdoor liquor service. They provided a, a, a two scale drawing. They've indicated the number of seats. They, they met all the requirements. So it does appear that they did apply in 2020 at some point.
And with that, I move that we vote to approve continued use of outdoor expanded, expanded outdoor table service previously approved in 2020 for Castaways Restaurant 986 Route 28.
Second.
Chief, your comment?
No issues with Castaways, Mr. Chair.
Anyone listening in wish a comment? I'll go with a roll call, ask for a roll call, Don?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
And I'm I.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the 2021 Annual Common Victular's License Renewal for Cape Side Kitchen 537 Route 28, Suite 1G, pending Building Department approval.
Second.
Discussion? I'll ask for a roll call. Don?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
And I'm I.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the common, the 2021 Common Victular's License Renewal for Sunday School Inc., DBA Sunday School Ice Cream, 606 Route 28.
Second.
Chief, your input?
Which is with that, Mr. Chair?
We lost you temporarily. We're on Cape Side Kitchen, no, Cape, we're on Sunday School, right?
Victular's License for Sunday School.
Yeah, I, I usually don't comment on Common Victular's License, Mr. Chair, but we have no issues with them anyway.
Okay, we'll leave that, we'll let that go then. Thank you. Any other discussion? A roll call, ask for a roll call. Michael?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Don?
Don?
My, my fear is that Don had knee surgery a while ago, and he was suffering, so he may have bailed out on us for this meeting. We'll see if he comes back. I, I do very much appreciate him for, if he has gone, that he stuck in as long as he did. I'm an I. Michael, move to the next one?
I would. Mr. Chair, before I read this next motion, and I believe that I had the same comments last year, I'm going to move that we, well, you know, before I make a motion, I will say my concern. The, the restaurant adjacent to the Sunday School Ice Cream, we approved an entertainment license the other night that ended at 10 o'clock. This one is requested to be entered, and, and I think that we need to be consistent. I know it's ice cream versus restaurant. I know it's not bar related, but I still, I still believe if we're going to make one shut off their music at 10 o'clock, we should make the other shut their music off at 10 o'clock.
I agree. Can you, Joe, is there any difficulty making a motion to that effect?
Not at all, and we would notify the establishment based on the outcome of the board.
Okay, Michael, do we wish to do that?
Bob Nickerson wishes to make a comment.
Okay.
Can you hear it? So I live right, I live right across from Sunday School. I've never heard any music that Nickelodeon is inside, so I'm not sure if this is the only inside music. You might want to check that.
Okay, Joe, can you check that?
I've never heard music.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Okay.
We want to move this till next week and get a clarification on whether it's inside or out, and then be presented with ours if it's outside, consistent to the bars.
I think that would be prudent.
Okay, we'll just do that then.
Okay.
Old business.
I just-
Ed?
Mr. Powell, I just, I just wondered if the chief had any, any opinion of their, their Sundays at Sunday School?
I don't think it's-
Here they are, good hot fudge.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, before we go on to any old business, this is Attorney Tomlinson. I just have a quick procedural question. To the extent that the, the issues raised tonight by the board and by public comment during this meeting, what is the board's preferred process for the port to resubmit its application to address the concerns raised by tonight, but raised during tonight's meeting?
Fair question. Joe, I'll, I'll refer you to that.
Sure, if I understood the question, the board dispatched that application. The board did not accept it this evening. The board is free to avail themselves of reconsideration, I would imagine, unless Attorney Tomlinson or anyone else would state otherwise. But I believe with any matter, the board has the opportunity to potentially reconsider matters, if I've understood the question correctly.
Mr. Powers, the question really focuses, I think, more on the fact that the port's application to renew the outdoor expanded service was timely. I just simply don't want the board to now claim that because there's been a hearing tonight, a reapplication is going to be untimely.
I, I couldn't speak to what the board would claim. The board is aware of the application. They are aware of the projected start date of May 28th. The board spoke previously of different timeframes, but I'm, I'm not sure that I'm the one that can answer the question, Mr. Chair.
I think my answer for that would be that anyone's allowed to reapply, but we've made our decision for tonight. Just move on to old business then. Michael, can you want to, oh no, this is Sand Pond, Joe. I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I had mentioned before that as we approached town meeting, which is now less than 11 days away, mercifully, there was an article, Article 36, which is a community preservation article, identified in the warrant as Sand Pond Revitalization Project. When the, when the Board of Selectmen first entertained this matter, I, I remember your discussion, and you were motivated in part with the understanding that the Finance Committee at that time had voted indefinite postponement. During their procedures, the Finance Committee at a later meeting reconsidered their action, and the Finance Committee has recommended approval of this. So it had been requested of me that I make you aware of that. So it's presented this evening if the board wishes to take any action on your recommendation, up to and including reconsideration for a different recommendation beyond indefinite postponement. So I wanted to give the board the opportunity to discuss this at your meeting, and certainly you're entitled to do whatever you like.
Thank you. Michael, go ahead, and I have a few comments as well.
I guess my, my comment is, and I see John Manahan just, his phone just lit up here. So if, if, if John wants, at least for me, if there's a, a re-pitch by John Manahan with any changes, I think I'd rather hear what John has to say before I comment on whether or not I would reconsider or not.
John, we'll give you the floor first, and we'll have our comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to speak, I know there's been a lot of discussion about this, both around town and on social media, some of it factual, some of it not. We just wanted it to be clear that we're not looking to make Sand Pond Bank Street, okay? Two years ago, we went before town meeting for a CPC request for bathroom, new handicapped ADA accessible bathrooms there, and it passed without a discussion. This is just the next step, which is to spruce it up a little bit. I've heard talk, we don't need another playground. This is not a playground. It's three pieces of equipment, two spinners. Don't ask me what a spinner is, I think it's like a merry-go-round, and a set of, and a, and a swing set, okay? It's replacing the broken fence. It's taking down any, if needed, dead or diseased trees based on the opinion of professionals, and removal of the dilapidated existing boathouse, which we have been told by professionals is beyond repair. There is no future plan to bring swimming lessons back there. There is no plan to pave the parking lot. We, as a commission, Eric in particular, as the director, has had positive comments in, in, in response to revitalizing this a bit based on the reputation that it's had over the last few years. So that's where we are. It's not going to be Bank Street. It is a pretty simple revitalization, and we think it's something that, we try to keep up our recreational facilities, and this is by far the one that has been the most neglected in the 15 or so years that I've been on the rec commission. So that's my, my pitch, Mr. McCaskill.
Thank you, John. John, Larry, if I, if I may, just follow up?
Go ahead.
John, will you just go over the numbers with us?
The NUM project funding request is $83,500, Mr. McCaskill.
And, and John, if you, if you wouldn't mind sharing a brief breakdown of that?
I apologize, I do not have that.
Okay.
I can tell you what it encompasses, but I cannot, I don't have a breakdown on each thing.
I, I, Larry, I would just say that I, I would like to see the breakdown. I'm not sure if, the warrants have already gone out to print, so- the warrants have already gone out to print, so our votes in there, we're gonna have to add an, add an addendum, uh, the morning of town meeting, and I would ask that we, we get the break, I would like to see the breakdown of this because 83,000, based on what John said, seems, uh, like a, like a, quite an expense for taxpayers to remove an old shed, add some fencing and some playground and equipment that I, that I will tell you is very controversial with the people that are calling me.
Yep. Uh, Joe?
Um, if the board likes, I, I can probably acquire, uh, the original application that was sent to CPC, uh, and projected this evening, if that's the board's desire. Um, I also just wanted to add, um, that we had the draft motions meeting this morning, so there is a positive motion that will be made, um, by the Finance Committee on behalf of CPC. So, a motion for indefinite postponement, uh, would have to be offered separately, um, from that one. There is a positive motion being drafted. Uh, but I may be able to acquire the information if the board wants it this evening, otherwise we can capture that and bring it to a later meeting.
I think just capture and bring it to a later meeting rather than delay this longer. Because, uh, John, uh, I guess to, uh, reinforce what Michael's point is, is that I've also gotten, uh, emails worried that we're going to destroy natural area with the big playground. You refuted that. You've also asked us by concern earlier that, were we, uh, going to give swim lessons there, why, why move them there from Long Pond? But, uh, 83,500 seems like a lot for just, uh, doing minimal work and leaving. I guess the concern people have is, can we leave this natural as possible? And I'd like to get that reinforced.
Larry?
Michael?
Yeah, the only comment, uh, based on what, uh, County Administrator Powers said, it's going to town meet. It's on town meeting floor, it just doesn't have a positive motion from the Board of Selectmen, but there's a positive motion, so it's going to vote. I think what John wants us to do is the Board of Selectmen to endorse it.
He wants us to endorse it, yeah.
That is absolutely correct. And let the town meeting decide on the flo- on the, on Saturday.
Yeah. Joe, do you have that?
Um, I do have the, uh, the breakdown of the costs.
Can you show it to us then?
Certainly. John, can you read that? Do you wanna speak to it? Now scroll down.
Uh, yeah, happy to go through it, uh, Mr. Town Administrator. It's all pretty self-explanatory. Unfortunately, if you scroll down, I mean, the fencing, the, as you can see, the, the playground is the between the st- the turner, the Omni Spinner, the swing set, and unfortunately, because it is, um, a new, a new area, it requires ADA compliant playground surfacing. And as you see there, that's the $26,000, so the rest is pretty self-explanatory. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, John. You've, uh, you've influenced me with the ADA compliance, my bias in life, so. Does, uh, does anyone care to make a, to, uh, make a motion to reconsider?
Some would.
Michael?
Larry, I, I don't wanna make a motion to reconsider, but do wanna comment. You know, two-thirds of that project is playground. One way or another, it's playground. We just were building a, a very expensive playground at the elementary school, which is open to the public. We have a very expensive playground at Brooks Park, and, and we have not, um, voted against any project related to the Rec, Rec Commission for as long as I've been on the board, uh, of substance. The complaints that I'm getting about Sand Pond, and, and I guess let me just talk about the first part of it. If we're gonna remove a small shed for $5,000, that's a, a gross misspending of taxpayer money, and Link Hooper could do that with two bucket loads. Pine trees, um, split rail fence, I can go along with a split rail fence. But I, I, I spend $5,000 to remove a shed of that size is silly to me. So really, what this project comes down to is, we want a playground at Sand Pond or not. And I think that some people do, and some people don't, and town meeting will vote it. As far as my support goes, it seems like a, a lot of money to spend, and, and feedback that I'm getting is parents that bring their kids, they're concerned that they're gonna have kids playing on the playground, and kids in the water, and they're not gonna be able to watch them both. And I think that's a legitimate concern. A lot of grandparents bringing their kids over there. Uh, a lot of people use that pond, and I, I just don't think that this is a great spend of taxpayer dollars.
Uh, John?
Um, in regards to the playground being built at the elementary school, obviously we do have the one at Brooks Park that is always open to the public. From what I understand, the one at the school cannot be used when school is in session at any time. And if somebody knows differently, please correct me, but that's what I've been told. While the school's in session, that is not open to Larry to bring his grandkids. Just, in regards to the shed, it's a little bit more than a shed, Michael, that's a pretty big, uh, building, and we, we received that bid. It wasn't something that we just pulled out of the air. So, like I said, in one of the, and I can't tell you exactly what it was, the Rec Department Rec Commission did a survey of taxpayers, of what they would like to see from recreation. And one of the most, one of the things at the top of the list was recreational opportunities in other parts of town. Because when you look at it right now, everything we own is in Howard Center, with the exception of, um, Long Pond for the most part. But for the majority of it, it's on Oak Street. So, um, that was one of the reasons we're pursuing this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Sandy?
Uh, muted. Sorry. Uh, I'll make it quick. Uh, a question through the chair to John. Bathrooms, I believe, were considered Phase 1, and the playground, swing set, whatever you wanna call it, Phase 2. Was there any discussion of, uh, further phases or, uh, improvements that you're aware of?
Uh, not that I'm aware of at this point, Mr. McClarty.
Thank you.
Okay, we've had a discussion, this, I'm left with, is there a desire to, uh, to move for reconsideration?
Well, I'd make the motion to reconsider.
Is there a second?
Unless you second it.
I'll second if we're both in. I'll go for a vote, Michael?
No.
Uh, I'm gonna vote no on this too. John, I hate to do this, but, uh, it's just some concerns. Ed?
I'll vote yes.
Okay, thank you for reconsidering, appreciate it, gentlemen.
You're welcome, and again, this, uh, will, will, you have a chance at town meeting.
Exactly. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Let's see, where are we? Comprehensive wastewater. Uh, Joe, do you have, uh, anything on this tonight?
Uh, I do, I have 200.
And we got the whole Griffin, we got the whole crew here.
And I will gladly defer to them, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Board. I, uh, understand it's been a long meeting, so I will keep my part brief. We've been working with GHD, uh, on all matters wastewater recently, including the CWMP, and, uh, we've discussed a plan with them for how we should consider moving forward, and, uh, I guess with that, I'll turn it over to Russ to go through the details.
Yeah, thanks, Dan, and, uh, good evening to the, to the board, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Town Administrator, thanks for letting us come in tonight. So, uh, regarding the CWMP, it's our understanding that the town, uh, wishes to make some modifications to it, and moving forward, you know, that is a process that has a defined steps to it, but we would recommend a couple things. You know, we were asked for, you know, what would be a scope of work to modify the CWMP, and we, we really need to know what the, the changes and the modifications are. We can, I'll, I'll keep this brief, but we did go through the CWMP, and we highlighted some things that we, um, you know, felt were, were worthy of a second look, mostly being things like the financing plan, um, uh, uh, evaluation or reevaluation of the, of the IA systems. Public engagement, obviously, is a big item, but there are a couple items that we would, two items specifically, that would recommend moving forward before we, we issue a scope of work for a, a change to the CWMP. Uh, the first item is a meeting with MIPA to, that, which is required when you do a notice of project change, which when you, when you modify an existing CWMP, that meeting has to, it's good to do that so you get direction from MIPA, uh, about the required changes. And then also host some public engagement, whether it's a workshop, a meeting, uh, but just to get the feedback from the public, so we can understand from the town, not just what the consultants, uh, um, you know, thoughts are on this, but also, you know, it's, it's the town, CWMP, we need to know what's, what's on the minds of the residents. Uh, we're not looking to modify things in the CWMP that are, that are, um, correct. You know, we definitely don't wanna stood, have the town spend money twice on the same item. So, uh, with that, you know, would recommend moving forward with these, or would, would recommend to the town, these two items, the meeting with MIPA, and then to host some sort of public engagement, whether it's a meeting, workshop, we can discuss how that's held. But once we get the feedback from those two items, um, you know, would be, would be, uh, very happy to, to issue a revised scope of work and a proposal, and what, what that work entails moving forward.
Thank you, Russ. Uh, what's your thoughts on timing?
Russ, I, I can take this. Um, so, we've been working with GHD, um, quick, you know, weekly, if not more often, through discussions with, with, um, between Dan and I, and also between, you know, the, the town staff wastewater team. Um, and, you know, the hope is to move this forward, um, in, in a, you know, keep, keep the momentum, really. You know, I, I think, a- as Russ touched on, in, you know, once, I think the MIPA, you know, meeting with MIPA, that could happen relatively, um, in short order, you know, depending on GHD's schedule, and, and I think that is an important for- first step, just to make sure that we are going down the right path. Um, GHD has done, um, a relatively, uh, you know, actually a thorough, a very thorough review of the CWMP to help pull out the items that, that we feel, that we've, we've talked about, um, at, at previous meetings, that we feel need to be at least touched on with, with MIPA. You know, so I think we have the material that we need to have the initial meeting with MIPA, but once that happens, I, I, I think it would be in the, in the towns and, and, you know, the residents and, and the concerned citizens' best interest to, to have, whether it be a, a workshop that, you know, could be, could be lengthy if we, if we include the, the second item that we're gonna talk about tonight, or we could break into two meetings. I, I know that you've had a lot of meetings recently, and there's gonna be, you know, a couple double meetings coming up, so I do recognize that the time that the board has, has spent, um, and, and appreciate that. So we don't, we don't wanna force it, um, we wanna make sure we have the best, or the most feedback possible, so I think, you know, advertising it in, in advance for a week or so at least would, would be, would be, would be good. You know, 'cause we wanna get as much, you know, we wanna, we don't wanna, we don't wanna rush the issue, but we wanna get as much input as we can, so that way we're not going back to MIPA, um, you know, more than once, really. You know, one, once we have that initial meeting, we, you know, see that we're going the right direction, we have the, you know, input meeting with, with residents, obviously the Board of Selectmen and, and other concerned citizens, then we would kinda roll that into, uh, a scope of work to, to move forward, and, and then release, um, GHD to, to, to do that, if, if, if it's at the board's pleasure to do so. Thank you. I, I wanna keep it brief.
Thank you, Griffin. Uh, thank you, I asked you to time me, 'cause I do think time is, is of the essence here, that we, that we keep moving. We've, uh, we can't delay this for, forever, we have to, uh, get public engagement, I agree with the MIPA is, but we, the timing's critical. Uh, other comments?
Larry?
Michael?
First, I, I thank the employees that stayed on the call as long as they have tonight, and then probably ought to start talking about hazard pay for Russ having listened to some of these meetings, but, uh, why, why aren't we going forward now? Why, why don't we just make the decision, Larry, to go to MIPA for the change? We know we have to change it. What, what do you, what do you need from us to vote to go?
I, I think it just needs consensus from us at this point, and I think that's where we're getting, that's what I'm hoping we get to. I agree.
I'm in.
Uh, I'm certainly in, 'cause that's the step we have, no matter what we do with the CWMP, we have to go through MIPA, we change it.
Right.
Griffin? Oh, excuse me.
Quickly, I think, you know, I think we can do that, and that's what we're looking for tonight, is that consensus, but the next step would be, you know, working with the board to try and schedule a meeting or two meetings to, to start to hash everything out, once, once that meeting happens with MIPA, so we would wanna turn that around, you know, relatively quickly, but we, we understand that notice is, is very important, too.
Well, I, I think that's, uh, what you need to work out with Joe, is as both, as quick as we can, schedule to, to start those. Michael?
And you have the consensus, you got two of the three of us on the call, so that.
Ed, as you.
I'd support moving ahead also.
Okay, so we have three of three of us. Michael?
And then, and then as far as the public engagement goes, you know, my own opinion, Larry, at this point is, every, every one of these public meetings that I've been to, Community Center, uh, Dennis, when we had the dry town, we lose people. We lose people fairly quickly because we're talking about too much, and people can't absorb that many pages of information, so multiple meetings make more sense to me. And then, and more important is, Larry, some, some campaign to re-energize a, a wastewater support committee, which we never voted out, it's just empty, but to try and get some of the people that are more concerned about, um, uh, the wastewater and the way that it's going, and show them that, that we're going in the right direction, so they can champion an effort with their neighbors and other people to say, hey, they're doing it right. So, I, I think an educational group that we can, that we can start to take a little bit of the pressure off the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator, as well as staff, makes a lot of sense to me. I know that there's a fairly strong movement in East Harwich right now. So, I would support multiple meetings, not one, uh, with all of the information, and then I would support the board having a conversation sooner rather than later, to try and get, uh, input on how, how residents wanna be educated on this. And we can't say, you read it in the Chronicle anymore. Um, I think we need to get out there a little bit, uh, guerrilla marketing, go door to door and figure out how we're gonna engage people.
Yeah, fully, fully agree. Just for me personally, I, I'm, I can't handle long meetings anymore. Russ?
Uh, one brief statement, and I, I agree 100% with Selectman McCaskill, and, um, a lot of times, you know, with these public meetings, I, I've always said the biggest problem with engineers is that they're engineers, and it's just, there's too much info, it's overload. With, with some of the changes we're talking about, we have, you know, we have some very specific items, you know, for example, we have the IA discussion, we have, you know, the financing plan, we have, you know, growth projections, you know, that would, that would make, you know, I'd be perfectly happy just focusing each one topic for each meeting, so we can have it very thorough, because it really is, if, if someone is interested, you know, there's a lot of questions, there's a lot of details with this, and to try to put it all together, I mean, after, you know, a half an hour of listening to it, you know, I just watched people's eyes go blank, so, um, to have this big four-hour workshop, you know, good luck with that. So, yeah, 100% with, with some separate meetings, I think that'd be a great idea.
My only comment analogy is, is that we, uh, at this point, we really need to start at, uh, step one. It's been around so long, people forgot, you know, what the whole purpose is. And sometimes, you know, as a board, we've been talking about this, we sort of take it for granted, that people have a basic understanding. Quite frankly, we have, they, they don't. Either they haven't paid attention, or they're new to the town, or new to the, uh, paying attention. Uh, Michael?
All right, this might pertain to the next topic, but I, I just would ask, um, Russ, right now he's under contract for the CAD modeling, and I believe we, we approved a $150,000 contract. Russ, where does the rest of this work come from? So, all of this extra stuff that we're doing and going to MIPA, how, how do you get paid for that, and is there funds available, or do we have to have a separate conversation about that?
Well, as long as we do it after 5 o'clock, I'm off o'clock, so, uh, it'll be my, my donation to the town of Harwich. No, this is, you know, the way, the way we operate as consultants is, we know that there are a lot of questions, a lot of back and forth, and sometimes things are relatively undefined with this process, so we are more than happy to, um, stand side by side with, with Harwich and help guide you through this process. You know, the work for us to review the CWMP, although we came up with a bunch of comments, this is what we do. It's, it's not a very, you know, it's not a ton of time, so we'll work with you for these things with the meetings, you know, um, that's all well and, uh, that's all, we can absorb that. You know, for some of the larger things, you know, I, we did, uh, I talked with Griffin, and we sent them a, a very small on-call contract to, not to exceed $5,000, just so when we do, for example, when we publish something in writing, a memorandum, you know, you do contractually want something, rather than just having a free will document. want something, rather than just having a free will document from an engineering firm with no contractual backing to protect everybody. So when it does come to the time of issuing a, you know, a statement, a report, a memo, something like that, we want to have a contract mechanism in place, which we will with the small $5,000 not-to-exceed contract. But as far as all the other meetings, attendance, things like that, that's just building the relationship.
Thank you, Russ.
Okay. Dan, any comments?
Well, yeah, I guess...
Have we given you enough direction for tonight?
Yeah, I think if I can just throw in one comment, you know, the thought tonight, you know, with respect to this process and talking about the MIPA conversation is really just to continue the mode of transparency as we continue forward with wastewater. You know, there's been concerns about that in the past, and while we may come to you more frequently with shorter discussions, that's really in an effort to try to keep everybody in the loop with what's going on and the process and where we're at. So I guess I would leave you with that.
Thank you, Dan.
Great.
Michael, do you have one more, one more comment?
Last point, and I move that we put Dan, Griffin, and Russ at the beginning of the next agenda.
Second.
Sandy, did you have a very quick comment?
Yeah, I just want to confirm that Russ and his boss met with my wife and I some time back and spent maybe two hours, maybe more. And so he's been very generous with his time, and I appreciate that. And I look forward to, you know, the ongoing discussion. I do feel, from my, from my point of view, we're in good hands, that, you know, there's a lot to learn, lots to process in the future, but I just want to put a plug in for Russ and his team, that they have gone out of their way to hear our concerns. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Sandy.
I hope you gave him a cup of coffee.
All right. I think we'll move to the next agenda item, which is, Mike, as I said, Don's bailed out, he's stuck with us a long time, but you wish to update us on the halls?
I do. Was that it from Russ? I think there was one more.
Griffin?
If we could just talk briefly about the pump station review, this is a little bit of a, of a different track. You know, the CWMP is one thing that, you know, we're working towards getting to a contract, too. The pump station review is under the sewer CAD contract. So, you know, citing these pump stations is kind of the backbone of the sewer CAD modeling that's going to be done. And that's something that we would want to move forward a little bit more quickly because the modeling is going to help inform the CWMP. So I think that really should be one of the first steps, you know, that we want to do, and maybe that we break into two meetings, because we are talking 30, 35 pump stations. You know, Dan and I have reviewed it with Russ, and, you know, we feel comfortable with, you know, the locations. You know, they've done a good job of identifying concerns and whatnot. But I think we want to make sure that the Board and public are, the Board and public are on board with that. And because, you know, like I said, those pump stations define where everything's going. And if we start, you know, pump stations might move around a little bit as we, as we move forward, and it's a bit of an iterative process. But it, we do need to set that first before we can sort of release GHD to really get to the hardcore modeling. Russ, just please add on at the will of Chairman Valentine, if you have anything to add.
Sure, yeah. Now, Griffin, you pretty much covered it. Yeah, as you mentioned, we have approximately, for the area that we are looking, that we are under contract to develop the sewer model, we have roughly 30 pump station locations. So what we'd like to do is, we have that all loaded up in Google Earth, we can do it very easily. And if the Board would like, just to run through, I know if you say one by one, it sounds like a long time, but probably an hour or two, a separate dedicated meeting, we could just look at each station, we can drop it right down to Google Earth, we can see what the land use setting is. The majority of these stations came from your existing CWMP, and the majority of the sites did look very good. There was three or four that we've moved around, shifted around to find a little bit better, better locations. But yeah, it really all starts with the pump stations. What we don't want to have happen is get to the end of the model and have people say, oh, you know, all these sites are no good, start over. While we do expect some changing with stations, things like that, this is really a good first step to do, so everybody understands where we're looking to put these pump stations. Correct, that defines the backbone of the sewer system. So would recommend a dedicated meeting to review those, probably hour and a half, two hours.
Well, I guess the next step is for Griff, you and Joe and the team to schedule these meetings, so we can get started.
Yes, we resume our group of five meetings next week. It'd be the first thing we'll bring up, these topics tonight, to get into scheduling.
Okay. Is there anything, Griffin and crew?
If you're done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thanks, as Michael says, thanks for hanging around. I'm sure you've enjoyed it, but thanks for hanging around.
I hope one of you is texting the other one, saying it's your turn to watch, it's your turn to watch.
No comment.
Michael, you wish to give us an update on the halls path?
I do. Very brief update, as we all know, Joe Powers took his well-deserved vacation last week with his daughters, and I chose not to bother him. I did have a conversation with the attorney for KP Law, Shirin, that has been working a little bit, she has, on the halls path issue related to the first lifting of deceased and desist. So Shirin's been told that we are not to communicate with the other attorney unless it goes and is approved by the Board of Selectmen, and that that was our vote. Joe and I had a good debriefing today. I also chose to leave him alone yesterday, given what we had to prepare for last night. And we've agreed to meet at the end of the week. So he and I will meet, we had a fairly decent, I won't speak to him, I thought a fairly decent strategy session on getting to the, what the heart of the problem was, what the mistake was, what allowed them to go, or why they went in there and did the work that they did. So we had a good meeting on that. Joe's going to gather some information. I called John Giorgio and told him that the Board had elected to open an investigation as our chief counsel. I thought it was prudent for him to know that. So John Giorgio was going to do a fact-finding mission on the inside of KP Law, speak to Shirin, speak to Amy Questle about moving forward, and said they had some talented attorneys that they would land, working for their firm. So my suggestion to John was the next conversation between Don, Joe, myself, he and whatever attorney he thought was the best. And in that, between now and then, Joe and I will come up with kind of a strategic plan that makes sense for questions and answers with that. The only ask that I have is, that road is being heavily traveled. I think, as you can imagine, as it was posted in the Chronicle, and once a controversy starts, the articles start, and people really start paying attention. And I think a lot of residents wanted to see what we were talking about. It's also, at least in my opinion, based on conversations with a couple of neighbors, becoming a thoroughway from Pleasant Bay Road to cut back out to 137. And I think it's incumbent upon us, until we figure out what's going on, to try and slow traffic as it enters from Pleasant Bay Road into the school parking lot, that we try and slow the traffic down and try and, try and make it a little more annoying to drive so that more people aren't cutting through there. And I think it amplifies as soon as we start road construction on 137. That's a perfect cut through. So I would ask that the Board support the Town Administrator talking to the GPW Director about putting some speed bumps on that road. It is a dirt road, it is a road that, previous to this construction, was a lot harder to navigate and travel, and larger trucks and equipment are going through there. So with the blessing of the fire chief, as I think that that's extremely important, the blessing of the fire chief, the involvement of the police chief, and the GPW Director, we should install on each end of the dirt part, some sort of speed bump to slow traffic down, and to try and stop people from driving through there until we figure this out.
Thank you, Michael. I don't think we need to hold on that. I'm certainly supportive. Ed?
Yep.
So I'd be asking consensus and support from the Board to look at how we can moderate and slow down, quite frankly, stop the cut through there, which we probably can't do at this point. One question I have is, is, has all work stopped now on that, on that road?
Yes, it has. The cease and desist time, I believe, included removal of equipment, and all equipment has been removed.
Okay, good. So that's an issue we handle.
I guess just one last thing, since we have Town Administrator on the line with us tonight, and he wasn't here last Monday, I think it's extremely important that the message stays the same with attorneys and everybody else involved, that the Board of Selectmen now is directly involved in this through the Town Administrator, and that nothing else is to happen out there until we clarify ownership deeds, whether or whether or not somebody has to go before planning, but nothing else happens out there until that, and that the Building Commissioner knows that this has been put into the Board of Selectmen's hands, and that he doesn't make a decision without our knowledge.
Okay. I'm sure that message is there now, Michael.
I just would like to hear Joe Powers' comments on that, make sure we're all on the same page. I'm not trying to step on Joe's toes, and he is the Administrator, but this is extremely important piece of land in Harwich, and work was done that I don't believe should have been done. I think that the Board needs to be involved in this, as I stated last week.
Joe, comment?
Yes, certainly, and thank you, Chairman Valentine, and thank you, Selectman McCaskill. Because I do want to comment, and I want to confirm, I appreciate the Board and the manner in which you've taken this matter on. You know, we have a charter that's very clear, in my opinion, in very many instances. You've invoked appropriate aspects of that charter, which is your right to conduct investigations. And I think that action is proper. There's been a number of missteps, there's been miscommunication, as Selectman McCaskill indicated, we've talked today, and I've alerted him to the conversations I've had over several weeks. So I think it's important, as was stated earlier, that everybody understand that this is a matter under consideration directly by the Board of Selectmen and through your Town Administrator. And I think people need to take confidence in that. And as was just stated, certainly allow me and afford me the direction of staff to make sure that we can address the safety concerns that were raised previously that have now been raised by traffic and road repairing. So I appreciate the action of the Board last week. I certainly appreciate the time off, and I'm right back into it, and I appreciate what Selectman McCaskill said this evening. And I thank the Board because it makes my job clear, and that makes it easy for me to perpetuate messages that everybody needs to hear.
Any other comments, Michael?
That's all, that's all I have, just Board of Comments. It's a slow start, but again, it's timing is everything, and at least the work is stopped. And Joe, Joe has my assurance to be there when he needs me. And once we lay out the strategy, we'll present that to the Board, and hopefully by the end of this week.
And I'm pleased, my comments last week, I think we ended up the right way, but I want to be sure that we're handling what we can do through the charter, through our best, even our policy, but we also work through the Town Administrator. And that we're doing, so I feel comfortable with the direction we're going as well. And that was, that was the question I raised last week, Michael, just be sure we're on that, because we need to, we need to get that in order.
Absolutely.
No other discussion? Selectman's report, or excuse me, Town Administrator's report?
None at this time.
Thank you for that. Selectman's reports? Ed? Michael?
Just to thank everybody, Board members, and I think that it often goes unlooked, and I would include Joe Powers in this, and I will also include Megan Elbridge in this, we're spending way too much time together. It's, 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 I'm hoping that as we, as we move forward, the meetings will be not so long and not so often. But just to the residents, I hope that they know the dedication and commitment that each and every Board member makes, and the amount of work that the, right now, that the Town Administrator is doing. There's a lot of very important issues, and again, I think it's, it's easy to criticize us, and it's easy to jump on us, but it's not easy to recognize that we are all taking a lot of hours out of our lives, and the commitment isn't for the $2,400 a year we make, it's for the love of our town, and how committed we are to our town. So we may not always get things right, but we're working real hard at trying to get things right. And I just want to let the Board know that I appreciate how many hours you're spending working on these critical things.
You can relay that to my wife, it would help me out.
Larry? I'd like to thank Michael for his comments and indicate that it goes for him as well.
I agree.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, rule call then. Ed? And I, Michael?
Aye.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.